Okay, everybody, we're gonna start. Call to order, the Malibu Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, June 5th. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings, Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Commissioner Euring.
Here.
Vice Chair Marx.
Here.
Chair Pearson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And Kristi, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to...
Can we approve the agenda here?
I'd like to move the agenda as proposed with the continuance of Item 4A to June 19th, 4B to August 7th, and 6A to August 7th. And did you want to change the order on something, Bonnie?
If the Commission wanted to entertain this, we would propose moving Item 5B to the beginning of the agenda so that the sheriffs who are here for that item would...
Before consent or after consent?
After consent.
Okay, and I move, we move 5B to the next item after the consent items.
I'll second.
And 6A is the, that you're doing continuous to was the SoHo item.
Eight, seven.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? No? Okay. Can I have a report, please, on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 26, 2017, and the amended agenda was posted on June 1, 2017.
All right, thank you. As usual, no ceremonial presentations that I'm aware of. And written in oral communications from the public. Do we have any speaker slips? Okay, we have three public speakers, and each of you get three minutes. And first, we have Julie Tumateas. Did I don't know if I got that right? You'll correct me, I hope. Uh, yeah, it should light up somewhere.
There's a red button.
There's a red button, red button.
There it is.
Oh, there you go. It's going now.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and community. Julie Tumamayet Stensley, Tribal Chair of the Barbarano Ventodainio Band of Mission Indians. I'm just back again to reintroduce myself. I hope to be a presence here in the community. Since our last time here, we've gotten certain communications straight in which our AB-52 letter had been misplaced, and I resubmitted it. So we are getting consultation notices and letters coming to us, and we're responding. So I appreciate that. Just to remind, you know, people here in this community that where Malibu really does not have a Chumash community here, we were forced out a long time ago, but that we still, you know, are affiliated, and we do have some descendancy and connection to the village sites out here in this town and on the outskirts in the unincorporated areas. So part of our presence that we intend to be doing is the Center for Wildlife Diversity. They're having an event on June 24th, a fundraiser from 11:30 to 3:30. So our tribal group will have some community, our tribal members there with a demonstration booth, and just come and say hello and bring your kids. It's for a good cause, a part of our connection with our land and with our culture and the spirituality of what makes us who we are. We're all dependent on nature, on the water, on the air, on the animals and plants. So this group is a wonderful group, and they do a lot of work for the natural world. So we're gonna support them, and we'll be doing some storytelling, maybe have some crafts for the kids, and yes, just come by and say hello. So thank you for all the work you do, and I look forward to working with you again in the future. Thank you.
Where is that, Julie?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's at Bluff Park.
Thank you very much. Pat, I never quite got the last name, but Tumamayet? Help me out.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Patrick Tumamayet.
Tumamayet.
Yes. I just want to introduce myself to the Chair and Commissioners. I'm Julie's older brother, Representative of the Barbarano Ventodainio Band of Mission Indians, and I just want to thank each and every one of you for hearing this out. I'm just here to introduct and start some kind of conversation and introduce, you know, the things that could be happening with the native community, and hopefully, we can work together in the future and strive towards preservation of the land and people. Thank you.
Thank you both for introducing yourselves, and look forward to getting to know you better.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm here because I think that there was a mistake made at the last City Council meeting, and a lot of people make mistakes. I make mistakes. Everybody makes mistakes from time to time. This last one was pretty substantial. For the last 26 years, people in the city of Malibu have been relying upon the development standards that have been specified both in the, well, not for 26 years in terms of the LIP, the, but the Malibu Development Municipal Code. And one of the things it specifies in the municipal code, and I'm going to quote, I've handed out some documents, so you can see, "The total development square footage shall be determined based upon the following formula." And then it goes on to explain what amounts to the total development square footage structural size chart. Now, for 26 years, we've relied upon that chart, and it's based upon the size of your property. And it's presumed that if you're zoned residential and the area around you is zoned residential, then the development of the area would be consistent if you built a single-family home. And I believe that that's what they mean when they talk about consistent with the character of the neighborhood. At the last City Council meeting, however, they used another term. They used development standards. Now, development standards was never meant to apply to eliminate or to circumvent the development standards that are provided in the document I just read to you. They were meant to be an exception to those standards. And it's very clear, if you read...
Norm?
Yeah?
I think you said development standards when you meant to say neighborhood standards.
You're absolutely correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie, for correcting me. Another mistake. But they did reference neighborhood standards as opposed to the character of the neighborhood. And it's very clear here, under neighborhood standards, it states that the Planning Commission may approve or conditionally approve increased height, structural size, and/or development area, and/or decreased setbacks, and then it goes on to accept, based upon neighborhood standards. And there's a specific formula for how you establish those standards. It's a huge, huge change in how Malibu has applied residential development standards in the past, and I think it needs to be looked at both by the Planning Commission. I don't know what kind of guidance you can give the Director or the Director of Planning, but right now, if I were her, I would not know how to make a recommendation on another house. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norm. Is there anyone else who would just make a public comment on something not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to Planning Commission and staff. Jeff? Any comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, actually. First, Kristi being here, kind of put me in a mind of thinking back in the past, and I remember that when the city first got going, since the law required 72 hours' notice before a matter could be heard, the agendas would typically come out the Friday before the meeting, and it would be 72 hours. And the council, at one point in time, said, "No, let's make it a week and 72 hours so we get a better chance for people to look at the material and the public a better chance to respond." And so we've pretty much done that. But I've noticed in the last, what, the last year, maybe, on the Planning Commission, it used to be that we would occasionally get a supplemental agenda that would come out on a Thursday, you know, once in a while, and now it's pretty much routine. I mean, I think we've had supplemental agendas just about every meeting, the last eight or 10 meetings. And I'd just like to say I don't like it. I think that, you know, to the extent you can avoid that, it would really be helpful. And sometimes the packages that come out are so big that they can't possibly be read, and that deprives the public and the applicants of really an opportunity for a fair hearing. So I'd just like to say that I don't like that. And then I want to talk about what Norm said a little bit, because what happened, I think, I did watch the tape of that meeting the other day, and it's clear that there was a confusion between what's called neighborhood standards and what's called neighborhood character. The two terms are built into our code. They've been there forever. They confuse everybody. They've confused me. I know they confuse John from time to time, and it's very difficult to kind of separate them in your mind because they're so close in terms of the terminology. But Norm is absolutely right, that neighborhood standards is designed as a relief from the general development standards and can only be applied to increase the size of the structure or to increase the total development square footage and not otherwise. And so it's gonna happen that people get confused about those two things. I don't think we need to belabor it other than to say that, you know, people get confused from time to time, and we can continue to operate pretty much as we have in the past unless the code is changed. So those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
Just to follow up on Norm's comment, I think it's worthwhile having a discussion up here someplace, okay? To understand, because I don't necessarily agree with Norm or with Jeff in terms of what happened that evening or what, you know? I got an email from Bonnie today, because I asked her a question regarding the neighborhood standards or regarding this, one of the properties, and I got back a statement that says, "Well, neighborhood," not standards, what's the other one?
Character.
Character is not defined, yet if I read the staff report, in the staff report, it says, "Here's what neighborhood, we looked at neighborhood character, and here's what." So somebody's defined it, right? So I just, we ought to have a discussion and sort of flush this thing out because I think it's gonna have a huge impact, right? I mean, if it stands the way it is, what the City Council does, it's gonna significantly change the way we look at some of these projects, and I think we should understand what the heck we're doing.
Mr. Chair? Can I just jump in real quick? Good evening, Commissioners. It's nice to be here. I agree with you that you should put this, a general discussion on your agenda if you want to talk generally about it, because as we know, the Brown Act's not gonna let us do that tonight. I would encourage you not to try and do an autopsy on a decision that's already been made because it doesn't lead you anywhere, but to the extent examples help illuminate your discussion, that's fine. But I do want to just throw one thing into the mix before this debate kind of spins out of control, and that is that if you look in the municipal code at 1704060, there's a very standard provision there that's in every zoning code that makes it clear that the standards in the code are minimum standards, and that whenever there's a discretionary permit or approval, that the decision-maker, based on the evidence of the record and the conditions on the field, can impose additional conditions to make those applications compatible with a neighborhood. And it makes sense that, to me, that the City Council use the definition of neighborhood that we find in neighborhood standards. I think Commissioner Jennings is absolutely right, that the neighborhood standards provision is there to give relief from more restrictive, and that is a specific category of application, but that doesn't preclude the, or in any way inhibit, the City Council or this Commission's ability to use that definition, to understand what a neighborhood is, what might be impacted by an application, and then to impose appropriate conditions to make sure that you're coming up with a compatible decision. So just throwing that into the mix.
Thank you.
Are you done, Steve?
Yeah.
Mr. Mazza?
Yeah, I just want to follow up a little on that, and not to belabor it, but it appears to me, we're now in a situation, since the council has taken an action, that we should have on every staff report, neighborhood character according to the rules, you know, 500 feet and all this kind of stuff, to look at, since they did.
Let's put it on a future agenda to see how you want to approach them in the future, whether you want to add that. I would think at this point that's such as an overreaction. I think this was an application that had specific facts, and it drew the attention of certain aspects, and it got resolved based on its own record. But if you want to add or relook at your format for your staff reports and add a section that analyzes that, that, you know, that's something that certainly could be done, but I think we should put it on a future agenda.
Okay, well, I agree with the future agenda, but I wonder where it puts us now. Can the staff make that decision, since this is now a variable? Can they make ACDPs? Because the ACDPs are made on the old rule and don't consider this, and if we get an ACDP where we don't get to discuss it, then it never gets discussed.
I'm just gonna stand on my belief that the rules have not changed and that we are applying them as best we can to each application that comes before us.
Okay, now, I just, well, if we're going to do that, I just hope we have very, very clear definitions of what neighborhoods are. There's always been a debate on that. It's pretty clear in the code in my mind, but people move them across canyons and all kinds of stuff, and we need at least some standard definition. Now, what, the other thing Jeff mentioned was this getting pretty complicated staff reports. I got two giant ones on Thursday night at 6:30. I got a notice in the mail for one of the hearings that we're gonna have tonight that was mailed on May 21st. I got it Saturday. So these cards may be handled differently than the old paper things. These might be considered junk mail or something. But that's my question to Kristi. At what point, I know Jeff said 72 hours, but if a project is posted on the city website Friday morning, how is the public gonna find out about it, read it, research it, and come to Monday's meeting and make a comment? Is that legal? I know it's probably legal, but is it fair? And can it be challenged? What?
I think you don't have to answer those questions. I mean, semi-charge is legal, and if it's a complicated situation, no, it's not fair to you, and it's not fair to staff, and it's not fair to the opponents and the proponents, but there are a lot of pressures... But there are a lot of pressures that go into decisions about whether or not to amend the agenda. So, I mean, I think, I think that this city has a long tradition of using those 10 days. And I think, you know, sometimes we do need a little encouragement from the decision makers that you really, really want us to stick to it. And then we can renew our resolve to stick to it. But, you know, every time it gets supplemented, it's not because, you know, staff's anxious to lay down your agenda, it's because someone is, you know, crying that it has to be done, and everyone's trying to accommodate. So I think that your admonitions tonight are well taken, and I bet you don't see a supplemental for a while.
Well, I like to have weekends sometimes. If I get 200 pages of staff reports on Friday, Thursday night at 6:30, I'm perfectly free to make a motion to continue because I haven't had time to see it, correct?
That's correct.
Now, another thing that I wonder about is, we seem to get some projects a lot quicker than other projects. Mostly lately, it's been zone text amendments. And I'm going to give you an example that's not on the case tonight, and that's Nobu Roku and, and the Tide Pool Gallery next door. We, we approved a pool there, and we were supposed to get a zone text amendment, which was filed, as I understand, about a year ago. And we haven't seen it. And meanwhile, the pool's there. And I know, I looked it up on the website, and there it was on Nobu Roku's, come lay in our pool. Well, they've since taken it down. But how do we determine that, how those things move through the process? Does somebody decide this ETA is more important than that ETA?
As you know, there are lots of projects that are, that applicants are pushing to get to a hearing. The speed with which they get to a hearing depends, in a lot of ways, on the applicant's ability to complete the application. We work with applicants the best we can to do that. In the case of the, the ZTA, LCPA, that you're referring to, the applicant has said that, and we have encouraged them, to submit for the conditional use permit and the other entitlements that they would want for those two properties so that you have everything before you at one time. They've never submitted that, so that's why it remains incomplete and hasn't come before you. So that's not, not in staff's hands.
So in the meantime, the pool can't be used?
Right.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
All right, thank you.
I'm last in line, but I did still want to touch on this question about the size of properties. I just want to get a little clarification. So there's code which has language to address this, but it sounds like there's different opinions in how to interpret it. If we talk about process as the conversation comes in front of us and/or city council, however it's managed, what would be next steps? Would it be policies interpretations? Would we change to LIP, MMC? What would be the, you know, kind of mechanics in getting any, you know, opinions clarified, language clarified? How would that work?
Well, you'd have to, it'd be the outcome of your discussion. So the outcome of your discussion is basically, okay, well, we all see it the same way. It could be reduced to a code interpretation. Or if there's something you say, okay, well, I see that there could be either way, but we really want it to only be this way, then we can talk about whether you need a code amendment. But those are the, sort of the cures. First, we have to figure out if there's really a, a disease.
Thank you. Nothing else. That's it? Okay. All right. Well, first of all, I want to thank the commissioners for covering me last meeting and voting me in as chair. It was very nice of you. Thanks. I heard you ran the meeting well.
Tried.
You tried. I really appreciate the opportunity to have the amazing trip I had. And just, I know we have a busy meeting, but I want to share a couple of planning things that I noticed in the rest of America that we don't have here. The first would be in Crested Butte, Colorado, the sign across the street from the hotel I was in, a very ordinary-looking, obviously older house, said, notice of consideration for a certificate of appropriateness. From the Historic Preservation Architectural Control Ordinance. So that's a public meeting that has come and gone, and I don't know if the place was found appropriate or not, but I, I thought that was interesting. We don't see that one around here. The other one was, I was in a place called Dove Creek, Colorado. You don't know where it is, I don't think, at the State Line Bar and Grill. I met this couple there that had built the most environmentally sustainable triple-lead home imaginable. A guy built it himself, took him 10 years. And he, I visited the house, he showed me a geothermal, and it was a mind-blowing house. But the funny part to me was, he called his local planning department, which happened to be in Telluride, Colorado, 100 miles away. And he said, yeah, I need to get a building permit, I'll build this house. They asked where he was. He said, Dove Creek. They said, oh, don't worry about it. So some parts of America, if you're far enough from the planning office, you don't have to worry about it. So there are options. Just wanted to make that.
Not in Malibu. Nothing is too hard for us.
Just our reality is not everyone else's reality. That's my only point. I, I would just like to beat the dead horse and encourage we agendize neighborhood standards, neighborhood character. Seems like both words come into play. I was caught off guard on this, on this ruling, too, and would like a better understanding like everyone else. So I would just encourage we bring that forward.
It sounds like there's consensus for that, so we'll put it on a, a future agenda.
I also want to agree with Jeff and everyone else who commented on, that getting agenda items while at a legal time period late is, this was a difficult weekend. And I was so hoping when it came that you had redlined the Malibu Memorial Park so we could see the changes, and it was. And so that's what allowed me to get through it. So I want to thank you very much for that. That made all the difference in the world. I also just want to comment, we have a pretty good crowd here, maybe one or two people watching on TV. So if you're not used to coming to a planning commission meeting, just a couple of things. Our job up here is to make decisions based on findings of the facts, the findings that fit our code. That's what we do here. And what's confusing and frustrating sometimes for people here, and even us up here, is, is it, we can't factor in if the people have lived in Malibu a long time, or if they're really good people, or even if they're international drug dealers, which has come before, apparently before. So our decisions are made on us trying to make sure it fits the code. And whether we like it or not, and also, as you'll learn, whether you like it or not. So if, if that doesn't go your way, you, I just want to make sure you're all aware you can appeal it. Yeah, I think you have 10 days, and you have to submit a check, which I don't know what the amount is anymore. Is it still 500? I think it's 500. It's probably gone up. So you can appeal to city council. But the way it works here, if you want to speak on an item, please fill out a slip that unless you're the applicant, you generally get three minutes. Or you can bring friends that can give you a minute each, as long as they're, they stay here with you. So you are encouraged and welcome to speak on items as well. I also want to make sure everyone knows that tomorrow night, and then Wednesday night, we're having joint city council, planning commission meetings on bringing the dark skies ordinance forward for Malibu. Tomorrow night, everyone's meeting here, and the public's welcome at 8 o'clock, and we're going to tour various parts of Malibu with survey sheets to understand what different zones of lighting look like, including my neighborhood up in Malibu West. So you can check out the details on that on the city's website. And then Wednesday night, there's a meeting here to go over and discuss it. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that. And with that, Christie, Bonnie, anything to add?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First, I'm sorry that we've had an abundance of supplemental agendas. Christie's comments reflect exactly what the situation has been. We will make an effort to avoid that as much as possible and have the agendas be as manageable as possible going forward. And second, I want to echo what Chair Pearson mentioned about the, the dark skies ordinance project that we're working on. We hope that as many of you as can come will come tomorrow night and Wednesday night. The tour is going to kick off here in the council chambers at 8 o'clock, and we'll be visiting sites around Malibu. And then, so that everybody will have a better understanding of, of what good lighting can look like, what, what lighting presents problems, what those are. Our lighting engineer consultant will be part of that tour and provide some expertise in commenting on that. And then Wednesday night is a follow-up workshop where we will review the, the results of the tour, what everybody observed, as well as go over in detail what the draft ordinance calls for, just because we don't want people to be surprised at the last minute. We want people to have an opportunity to participate in this. It will, currently, in its, its current form, it calls for a compliance period where existing lighting will be brought into compliance with the new standards. So just, just so you know, that's one of the things that's part of the ordinance. And then finally, commissioners, you may be aware that there has been fairly recent legislation on accessory dwelling units, and we've been getting a number of comments on those. We're going to present an item on June 19th to explain what that legislation is about and how it relates to our code. So just be aware of that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Bonnie. Christie, did you want to add anything?
Okay.
And thank you for joining us tonight.
My pleasure.
One last note. I've noticed lately, commissioners, that occasionally in this comment period and, and in some items before public hearing, we, we get a little bit towards deliberations. I just want to caution everyone to ask questions during question period on each item, and then let's do public, we'll do the public hearing before we get to any sort of deliberation. Just something that was on my mind. Quick question. When we change the order, do we still have consent before?
Yes.
5B? Okay. So the consent calendar, does anyone here want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull 3B1. And did the public pull anything?
Oh, thank you. Yes, we have 3B1. It looks, oh, and 3A1.
Okay. I move the consent calendar 3B2.
Well, I have a comment on that. I wasn't here for one of the meetings, so I don't know. How do I vote on that?
We can just mark your abstention on that.
Okay, I'll abstain on the May 15th planning meeting minutes. Okay, can we have a vote on the consent calendar?
Do we have a second?
I mean, on this consent calendar?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do you turn on the mic and say that?
I'll abstain on the minutes of the first one. I wasn't present for that meeting.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay. So moved?
So we, we have pulled 3...
We have pulled 3B, 3A1 and 3B1.
Okay, so we're only approving 3B2 at this point? Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. Item 3A1, the Malibu Memorial Park Project, initial study number 16-002, and mitigated negative declaration number 16-001, coastal development permit number 15-028, variance number 16-016, site plan review number 16-009, minor modification number 16-010, and conditional use permit number 15-011, oops, and lot merger number 16-001. Can we have a report, please? Chair? Chair? Before you do that, little high drama. I have a request. As you can see by the sidebars and stuff happening over here, if you would trail this matter, we're trying to work out a couple last details with our neighbor to try and assuage their concerns. And so it probably would be best for everybody involved, the city, us, the applicants, and our neighbors, if you could trail this matter till later on in the evening, because if we can come to an accord in regards to addressing their last issues, then we can have the full public hearing, and hopefully that's something that's no longer going to be a problem for them. Commissioners?
Fine with me.
We can just move to amend the agenda at this point and move it down to the end, right?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yeah. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. All in favor of moving it to the end?
Aye.
Okay. We've just moved to the end. So let's move on. 3B1 is administrative coastal development permit number 16-026, site plan review number 16-029, and demolition permit number 16-027. Can we have a report, please?
Good evening, Chair Pearson and members of the planning commission. The project before you is for demolition of a single-family residence at, at 29458 Blue Water Road, and the construction of a new single-family residence of 5,593 square feet, as well as a 1,110 square foot basement and a mechanical room. A 504 square foot detached garage and trellis is also proposed, along with a swimming pool and a patio. Two sports courts, a tennis court and a bocce ball court are also proposed. The existing second residential unit would be remodeled and reduced in size to accommodate the increased square footage proposed as part of the residence. A site plan review is also requested to increase the height of the flat roof to 24 feet for the residence and 22 feet for the second residential unit. The site is located on Blue Water Road in the Point Dume area. And here's an aerial photo of, of the neighborhood. And here's a bird's eye view of the neighborhood. The demolition plan shows the demolition of the entire main house and the remodel of the second unit. And the site plan shows the proposed single-family residence in addition to all the accessory structures that were mentioned previously. Elevations are provided for review. And the story poll plans show that the height of the residence would not change. The proposed house would be pushed back, so more of the development would be towards the rear of the property, increasing the size of the, the front yard. So these are story polls of the rear and side yard. And these story polls show the garage and trellis. And the existing second residential unit also has story polls, but they're hard to see because they, they outline the existing single, or the second residential unit. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have any disclosures? Jeff?
Yes, Commissioner, Chair Pearson and I visited the property a couple days ago. Didn't learn anything that isn't in the staff report.
No disclosure.
No disclosure. As Mr. Uring said, we visited the proper, property, met with Joseph Lozama, and spent most of the time talking about the configuration of how you get out of the basement and learned what was already in the staff report, but it was just hard for me to see and completely understand at that point. Any questions of staff?
I found these plans particularly hard to read, even with my magnifying glass. Can you, it looks to me like there's a double hedge around the, all the property except the, the road frontage. Actually, it even looks like there is there, too. Is that what that is, two hedges? Or are there two fences?
Which diagram is that you're looking at?
I'm looking at T16.
Oh, right. There, there's a wide hedge sort of around the perimeter of the, of the site. I will say that right now, the hedge along the front property line does exceed six feet. And as part of the project, the hedge will be reduced in height to 42 inches to conform with the LIP standards.
So in some cases, it said PA in the, in the middle of that hedge. What is it? So, in some cases, it said PA in the middle of that hedge, what does that mean?
PA stands for planter area.
Planter area?
Yes.
So, is it a planter or is it a hedge?
It's a hedge, and it's labeled planter. It's a planted area.
Okay. Now, my main concern and the reason I pulled this is, in looking at the light well, light wells have to be less than 48 inches. And this one, without any dimensions, looks to be about nine feet. The elevations on the property drop from 198 down to 198, I didn't bring my magnifying glass, but it's 192. And then they drop again to 185. So there's an area that's six feet below ground level, which is, by definition, daylighting. And the city council has disallowed walkout basements. And we have a specific interpretation, they disallowed walkout basements on the Crummer So, I'm going to recommend pulling this for a full CDP. The other reason I'm going to recommend that is, we did get neighborhood comment on the size of the property, and it's right up to the edge. So we need to look at the neighborhood, whatever it is. So do you have a comment on that area that's lower than ground level on the stairwell, on the light well? Now, it did take me my largest magnifying glass to spot that. It was not in the staff report.
I'm sorry, I'm not quite clear on what part of the, so are you saying that the light well daylights three feet?
Where is the light well? I'm backwards, aren't I? Okay, this area right here, that square, is six feet below ground level, which means that the daylighting from here to there is, if that's four feet, that's about 10 feet. And it's not allowed to be more than three feet. Or if it's a stairway.
That area is a planter area that's...
But it's below ground, planter area.
Right. It is below ground.
If you don't plant it, it's a patio, right? And our code says basements may not daylight more than three feet. And then we, without going to code, somebody changed it to 25% of the outer area, four feet. But that's 10 feet, and that doesn't cut it. So I think we need to look closer at this plans and hopefully get some more dimensions, put on our plans so we can actually review what's going on.
Maybe we should go to a public hearing, and maybe we can get some answers.
Fine with me.
Okay, all right, then I'll...
Well, let me ask. You don't have full public hearings on, no.
The motion is to bring a fat square footage.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm making that motion.
Okay, I'd second that.
Discussion?
I have a question for staff. I note that this project, part of the project description is for the replacement of an onsite wastewater treatment system. It's the first one I can remember seeing in a long, long time that didn't require an alternative wastewater treatment system. And I'm struggling to understand the criteria that you use, if there are criteria, for when you require an alternative onsite wastewater system and when you allow the replacement of a conventional onsite wastewater treatment system. And I don't necessarily have to answer it now, but if at some point in the future staff would help me out and explain it, I would appreciate it.
Sure, we'll get details from Environmental Health about that.
Chair?
Chair? Not a motion.
Excuse me?
I just have one comment.
Yeah, please.
And it goes back to the things we said in opening comments, and on page seven, it says, "Project does not adversely affect neighborhood character." And we haven't defined neighborhood character, so I don't know how you can say that without having that definition. So I think having this come back and go through that definition so we know what the heck they're saying would be helpful.
Kristi, let me ask you a question. There's a motion here, but I also have speaker slips.
Let's hear the speaker's slip.
Okay. So then, before we go to motion, correct? Okay, that's what I thought. All right. So we have Joseph Lozama, and Doug Burge, and Jen Hoppel. Does, it says for questions only, does anyone want to speak? Okay, Doug?
Good evening, commissioners, I'm Doug Burge, the architect for the project. Appreciate you hearing this. We've been working with the planning staff for a while on this. The owners are here also this evening. Joseph is going to be able to answer your question, John, concerning the basement light well. We were actually very careful working with that with staff. Actually, it's a two-and-a-half-foot drop planter in that end area. The 3x4 area you're referring to is the landing, and you are allowed to have a three-foot-wide stair relieve yourself from a basement. So that is the basement condition. The nine-foot-wide or 15-foot-wide section there is a planter that's 30 inches dropped from the ground, so from the level, it's not six feet down, maybe that's something. But Joseph's going to clarify that.
Okay.
So, what I just wanted to say was that, if those of you had been to the site, somebody says, "Well, why are you tearing down a house that is built, you know, in 1980 and, of course, back east?" It's usually 1880 or 1780, so 1980 around here seems to be an older home, but we'll take that. We have the contractor here, because we looked at ways even to possibly save that house. That was the first intention of the property. The owners had bought this property. The guest house had been built in a subsequent version later on in the 2000 era, and so that actually is why we were remodeling that. We felt that was in the right location, and as a shape and size of a guest house, it was perfectly proportioned. We're actually making it even smaller than what it was originally. So the house itself was in pretty bad shape, actually very bad shape, and even people were hard even to rent it. So we determined that it's actually going to be cheaper to tear it down versus remodel that house and keep it. So essentially, the new house is set in a location where the existing house is, and for the most part. The biggest planning issue was the fact that the front yard was the backyard of the house, and people enjoy maybe looking at their car collection when they're in their backyard, and we did not. We thought the ocean view was a better view than someone's cars, so that's why we turned the property around, using existing driveway, which is on the top right part of your page. It's actually, two driveways were on this property already, so we could minimize the grading, coming around to the backside and actually now putting the pool in the front view and organizing it in a way that made a lot more sense. So, that's how the project started. There was a lot of existing non-conforming structures that Bonnie was aware of that were on this property for years and years, an old trailer and some other stuff that were removed when the new owners took the property over. So, we feel it's a vast improvement. The other thing that was requested at the last minute was that we were asked, in reference to this neighborhood character and neighborhood standard, to compile a radius map and looking at all the properties within 500 feet around the property and coming up with the square footage. And we have that exhibit to show you if we need to look at that, which basically uses our square footage, which is the TDSF that we're looking at, and comparing it to the houses that are around the neighborhood. And this is in Central Point Dume, if you were looking at it on a map. So that's it for the questions. Thank you very much, and Joseph is here to answer the questions about the basement.
Okay, thank you. Joseph?
Good evening, Chair Pearson and members of the Planning Commission. Joseph Lozama, Burge and Associate Architects, 24911 Pacific Coast Highway. About the planter area outside the basement, we are looking to the LIP's definition of a basement, chapter 2.1 or section 2.1, where they say specifically that the vertical dissimulations between the floor of the first floor and the bottom of the first floor and that of the basement can be no more than three feet. And where we come in is two-and-a-half feet. It's the difference of a ceiling height in the basement of 195 feet above sea level, and then the finished grade of the planter being 192 and 1/2 feet. So that's where we get a compliance with that three-foot maximum.
Thank you. Jen Hoppel, did you want to speak? Okay. We have one more speaker, Julie Tumamayet. Getting better? I need practice, I'm going to keep working on that.
I had a couple questions on this, Julie Tumamayet, tribal chair of the Barbarian Yaventino Band. Was it a discretionary or ministerial project?
It's discretionary.
Okay, all right. Back in the 80s, you know, there was probably not a whole lot of attention paid to archaeology. So I'm not going to make any, you know, the only recommendation I'd like to make for this project is that if you have accidental discovery language on cultural resources to add that, and as I was saying, that we are on a coastline in a sensitive area where back in the 80s, there was probably no attention paid at all to archaeology. Some of the coastal areas out here have, presently have burials at eight feet. I don't know how much over X there's going to be on the property beyond the footprint of where they're putting this, and I don't need consultation, I just want people to be aware of. There are some really deep, very concentrated archaeological materials along the coastline here, so where people might say that, "Well, I don't, we don't know what we're looking for." When you see them, you'll know. And just to be respectful of that, to contact the city in case things are found, and there are state laws and federal laws protecting human remains and our cultural areas, items. So just be aware that you might discover something, and out of respect for this longstanding culture, that in some cases, they may be damaging something very important. And just thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Chair Pearson, I just wanted to clarify that there was a Phase 1 archaeological study conducted for this property.
I meant to mention something like that. If there's something that there is within a known site, then the potential's even higher.
Okay. So no resources were discovered during the Phase 1 analysis?
What type of Phase 1, was it extended Phase 1 with STPs?
I don't believe so.
Or just a surface?
Just, it was, I don't have those details here, but typically that would be the records review and a surface examination.
Yeah, okay.
But the standard conditions that you referenced are included regarding any unexpected discoveries.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but generally on every project of this sort.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Any more public speakers on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and back for deliberation or make a vote on the motion.
Chair Pearson, if I could. It's obviously the commission's discretion about whether to continue this for a full public hearing, but the site plan review request included a review of neighborhood character in terms of how the site plan review request, which is for height, relates to the neighborhood. And so, what I expressed in my email to Commissioner Euring was that typically that type of, and what was done in this case, staff analyzes neighborhood character through site visits and aerial photographs, and also comparing what is existing on the site now compared to what's proposed. And the heights that are there now are actually getting smaller, although the square footage is getting bigger. Other houses in the area visually are similar. And so that's how staff reached its conclusions about neighborhood character. So, absent a neighborhood standards request, we did not conduct that type of analysis.
Right, I, thank you. I noticed that though there's no definition, I found of neighborhood character, you reference in every report, sighting, mass, and height, if I'm not mistaken. So on this project, I did walk out onto the street, I think Mr. Euring might remember. So I tried to gauge the massing, the sighting of this project, and I do know that neighborhood well. And I should disclose that my mom developed two of the homes up around the corner many years ago, so I have a very good idea, and my best friend lived up around the corner. This home is pretty standard for the neighborhood, in my opinion. But with that said, any more comments before we vote on the motion?
Just one, I mean, I'm trying, I thought I brought Bonnie's email to the meeting tonight, but apparently I did not. But I'm pretty sure in that email, Bonnie said that there's no definition for neighborhood character.
That's right. So basically...
So let's find, let's get a definition before we say it applies. It's all, it's all, look.
It could potentially hold a lot of projects pending that definition, that's just a consideration.
Bonnie, you mentioned height, what about size?
Since the request had to do with height, that's primarily what we looked at, but in terms of size, as well, this is comparable to things that are in the neighborhood based on a look at GIS.
And when you do that, do you look at lot size? Since this is a smaller lot than normal.
Not necessarily.
Okay. Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
No.
Motion carries.
We are moving on to amended agenda here, so we're going to 5B, coastal development permit number 17-057. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Pearson and members of the Planning Commission. What you have before you this evening is an application that will establish a no parking zone between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00 a.m. in the morning for no greater than 30 minutes, and it's in a specific stretch of Pacific Coast Highway. This vicinity map and aerial photo here essentially shows you the project area. The area where this parking restriction would be implemented is the area that you see there that's highlighted in the photograph. The long blue line that you see that runs along the eastbound and westbound Pacific Coast highways shows you the project area. The other various colors you see there indicate red zones, curb cuts, loading zones, and a bus stop as well. What staff is proposing in this stretch of highway is that parking be limited to no more than 30 minutes between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m., Monday, excuse me, Monday through Sunday, so it would be seven days a week. And the enforcement on this would be a towaway zone. It would be enforced by the LA County Sheriff's Department. We've estimated that we'll have to install approximately 14 signs to inform the public of these parking restrictions. These signs may be mounted either on the existing light poles and sign poles that are on Pacific Coast Highway, or new poles may be installed for the installation of these These are some photos that were taken in the project area, and as you can see, we're not really talking about that many parking spaces. Once you factor out the loading zones, curb cuts, and the bus stop that's there, this affects approximately 37 spaces, and that's if you figure each space is about 20 feet wide, or 20 feet long. In some cases, some cities you'll see use larger dimensions, say like 22 inches, which would cut down the number of spaces to 32. So our code does not have a standard. The reason why we use 20 is just because for a pool-in space, that's the typical depth that we use. We don't have a parallel parking space standard. And what the goal of this project is, is that this area of Pacific Coast Highway is near a few coastal resources, those being the Malibu Pier, the Adamson House, Surf Rider Beach, and then also we have the hotel that you see there, which is also considered a visitor-serving amenity. We don't expect any impacts to these visitor-serving amenities through this parking implementation, and the reason being is that Surf Rider Beach, the pier, as well as the Adamson House, Malibu State Lagoon, those are all... State Lagoon, those are all locked or access prohibited during those hours of 2:00 to 4:00 a.m. The beach, for example, is technically closed from sunset to sunrise. The pier, unless it's having a later event, usually is locked by midnight. And the Adamson House is their lot. We have the hours that are in the staff report, but it's essentially dusk till dawn. And anyone who's using the Malibu Beach End, they have a 24-hour parking lot as well. And the Sheriff's Department is here this evening to describe what those parking conditions look like in the middle of the morning hours. But early morning hours like that, there'll still be unrestricted parking located within reasonable walking distance right outside of this project area. And the goal is actually to facilitate more public parking. It's come to the attention of staff, as well as the Sheriff's Department, that vehicles are being stored for long periods of time, and they're not being moved in these parking spaces. And when you have that type of situation, essentially, you have someone privatizing the parking space, not making it available for someone to use in the morning hours if they were saying they were gonna surf at Surf Rider Beach, or just turnover in the afternoon. For example, if you look carefully at the gutter in these pictures, you'll notice the sand that's next to the white trailer that you see there. And then that trailer's being, is attached to the black-colored vehicle's front end you see there with the wheel. And you notice the sand by the wheel. Then if you look forward, you'll notice that the gutter has no sand. And the reason for that is that when there are street sweepers that run on Pacific Coast Highway, they have to go around this vehicle, and that's why the sand is building up in that area. And this is something that you can look at if you were to walk and visit the site and look at where some of the vehicles that appear to have not moved for a while. You'll notice the gutter next to those vehicles is very dirty. There's trash and debris in there as well as sand. And then you look forward, and you can almost make out the path of the street sweeper and see that the gutter is clean in those other areas. So, this is just an example that there are vehicles being parked there for long periods of time, limiting the turnover of parking, which therefore limits coastal resources and access to those who are visiting the area or local residents just trying to access those sites and park in the area. Staff recommends the adoption of the resolution, which would approve this coastal development permit. And also, staff did receive a comment letter from the California Coastal Commission requesting that there be a longer period of time that someone could park. Currently, as I mentioned, this would be in effect from 2:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the morning. And you could park for no longer than 30 minutes. What that means is if you were to say pull your car in at midnight, you could park until 2:30, because once 2:00 in the morning hits there, you have a 30-minute window in which you can park your car. The same is true if, say, you want to get an early start going out to the beach in the morning. You could reasonably park there at 3:30 in the morning. The half hour would end at 4:00. And after 4:00, it's once again unrestricted parking. So, in effect, parking is truly limited between the hours of 2:30 and 3:30. The Coastal Commission letter asked for, asked for a longer period of time. They'd like to see a one-hour ability for someone to park and also stretch the hours from, I think it was 1:00 to 5:00 in the morning. The reason why that's not practical at this time is that what we're using, as we referenced in the agenda report that was provided to you, is we're using a section of the Los Angeles County Code that was adopted by reference when the city incorporated in 91. That particular section of code specifies no parking between the hours of 2:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. for no longer than 30 minutes. To accommodate the requests of the Coastal Commission, we would have to do something different than that ordinance. And since we don't have an ordinance that matches what the Coastal Commission is recommending, it's not feasible to do that. Oh, we've, in discussions with the California Department of Transportation, they are the ones who own, are responsible for Pacific Coast Highway. They made it very clear that they will agree with any changes to parking, provided that there is an ordinance that supports those changes. And so, that is the reason why we are sticking to this ordinance, which was adopted and essentially is currently the only ordinance we have that would pertain to this. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department is here this evening as well and available for any questions, as well as staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Excellent report. Can we have disclosures first?
I've driven by there 12,000 times.
Did you actually count?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've driven by there fewer.
Okay. Same. Can we have questions now? Steve?
Just, assuming we approve this item, how soon will we know that it's working? I mean, will we know within two weeks, three weeks? What do you think?
We should know pretty, pretty quickly.
What's pretty quickly, you think?
Within a week, I would think.
Okay.
So, the ordinance goes into effect immediately?
The ordinance exists right now.
Oh, okay.
This is the CDP to allow placement of the signs. So, that'll run through its normal local and Coastal Commission appeal periods, and then we'll post the signs, and then we'll see.
Okay, question?
Yeah, go, John.
Richard, could you put up your first slide? What is this area right here that doesn't appear to have any use on the table? It's not existing parking, red curb, yellow curb, or driveway.
That's part of the Malibu Beach End property.
Yeah, but it's a, it's the curb. It's right there. People are parking on it. I'm just wondering why the map doesn't show anything there.
No, it's, it's public parking on Pacific Coast Highway.
Can I see the thing again? And that's the project limits, and this is the uses. So, why isn't it pink? Existing parking? Just an error in the map, or is there something different about it?
I believe what you've spotted is an error in the map. That is existing parking, and that area was figured into the, the total area for eastbound Pacific Coast Highway.
That's what I thought. I just didn't know if I missed something.
We did measure that.
Okay.
Actually, I do have a little further disclosure. I don't know if it matters. I was at the Zeracis meeting. I think I was the only other person besides the sheriffs at the Zeracis meeting outside person. So, I got to hear, what I did learn is I got to hear their perspective on the situation down there, which factors into this. My question, which I think you answered, actually answered all my other questions in your presentation, but is somebody able to just move around in this zone to avoid having to leave it in a ticket?
Yes. And that unfortunately is the weakness in this. The Los Angeles County Code section, I believe, does not specify minimum distance that you have to move your car. And in order for us to put that minimum distance into this, we would need it referenced in the ordinance, because when a police officer, and they can explain this, when an officer, a sheriff's deputy cites somebody or toes a vehicle away, they're doing it based off of the ordinance, not the coastal development permit. And so, that is why we don't have a minimum distance that it has to be moved. And that is something that we are looking into and with what we will bring forward to city council in the future for parking ordinances, we would be able to control that and put some sort of, either a limitation on the park, you know, a certain distance, or say something like they have to be moved out of city limits. At that point, when we modify an ordinance, is when we could certainly correct this problem.
All right. So, I guess theoretically, we will hear back from the sheriff at some point if there's habitual abusers of that little loophole there. Just a statement, you don't have to answer it. Any more questions?
Yeah, just a couple more. You had mentioned we could get some insight into kind of who normally parks there. Should we discuss that now or after public comment? You know, could we get that input from the sheriff, what have you?
Yes, of course. They are available for questions and could be asked at this time.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna comment.
Okay, okay. And then otherwise, is there any impact expected to local residents, their ability to park here?
The area that has been highlighted here is strictly commercial. The residences that are located between, we'll say, the entrance to Surf Rider Beach and Malibu Pier, that area will remain unaffected. And then the next set of residences would be to the east of the project site, or this area. And we haven't received any concerns from the residences, plus there is available parking. That area is still open parking 24 hours in front of those properties. From what we saw here, it looks like the vehicles that don't move were all over, larger to what you would consider oversized vehicles. Judging by the dirt in the road, that's typically where you found it.
All right, thank you.
Question. Is there any law about oversized vehicles, parking?
Within the city limits currently, no. There is not. The only oversized vehicle law for Pacific Coast Highway, and the sheriff could speak to this, that I'm aware of, would be trucks. And I think if you're over three axles, you're prohibited from being up Pacific Coast Highway. That's about, I think, the only large-size vehicle rule we have.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'm gonna open the public hearing. We have four speakers, starting with John Stockwell, followed by Stella Yap, then Jonathan Roth, and Sorry Drucker.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is John Stockwell. I'm a Malibu resident. And with my wife Helena Henderson, we own and operate Malibu Farm at the pier. And we've been working with the city for a while to try and figure out a solution. When you ask what vehicle is the specific one, it's, it's vehicles from the Malibu Surf Shack. It's a van and trailer that they park on both sides of the street. For a long time, they were also giving lessons and renting on the state, on the, on the southeast side of the pier, and the state shut them down there. They still rent their kayaks and stand-up paddleboards. And what they do now is, I guess the rule is now that it has to move every 72 hours, and they just swap them from one side to the other. And, you know, it takes up like eight to 10 public parking spaces, and it's, it's so hard for anyone to find parking, whether they be our customers, our employees, people who want to go to the beach. It seems very unfair for a commercial business to be able to monopolize public parking spaces. We've been on the pier for five years. They've been there. Those same vehicles have been parked there and never moved, except to switch spaces. I'm worried, personally, I don't understand why it can't follow the same midnight to 5:00 a.m. restrictions that Surf Rider has. And if the beach is indeed off-limits after midnight, what's the 30-minute? You know, what, how can you visit the beach if it's, if it's off-limits? But essentially, we're asking for it because we, you know, we've tried to work with them. We've, we've, we thought initially, I know, the city felt like maybe they shouldn't be, how can you even be operating a commercial business off of PCH? And they tried to sort of, you know, whenever there was an inspector around, they said, well, they let people go there now and pick up their own kayak from it, so they're not really operating. But anyway, overall, we'd like to, they've now also brought in a big box truck, so they have a big box truck in addition to these. So, they're basically taking up maybe 15 to 16 parking spaces on PCH. And, you know, there was a problem for a while with RVs and other things, but by far, they're the biggest offender and the, I think, the genesis of, of, of this restriction. Again, I would, I would, I worry that they're gonna get their kids to just drive around in between 2:00 and 4:00, because it's so profitable for them, that that's what they're gonna do, and then just park it right back there at 4:00. But if this is the best that coastal will let, you know, us have at this point, then I think we should go for it and see if it does solve the problem. We'll know quickly if those vehicles move or if they just somehow get around it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Stella Yap?
Hello. My name is Stella Yap. I'm a resident. I live in between the Malibu Pier and Surf Rider. So, I just wanted to clarify what this was, because I just got something in the mail, and I didn't realize if it was gonna affect our parking, which I was concerned about the residential parking. So, my, my only suggestion is if they're going to keep restricting parking, can residents get parking permits so we can keep our cars there? And that's really my only question.
We can bring it up with staff. We don't have an answer right now, obviously. It's not even on our agenda either.
Sure, is that something?
Do you park on the street now?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, so, and if I have friends or visitors, relatives, sometimes there is no parking in front of our area, our area. And now that that's restricted from midnight to 5:00 a.m., they can't park to the left, so they would have parked to the right, but now that's gonna be restricted. So, it, I'm just, you know, just bringing that up. Okay, thanks.
Thank, thank you very much. Jonathan Roth?
Good evening, and thank you. First of all, I applaud the efforts by the city to address this issue. I'm also a resident. We live next door to Stella. And this is a chronic issue. You have merchants that are parking their, their vehicles there 24/7, and they, they know the game, they play it, they play it very well and very effectively. So, I applaud that. I do, like John, question why this area can't be restricted from midnight to sunrise. I think that would eliminate a lot of the, in addition to the merchants abusing it, but there's a lot of RV vehicles that now park there. I haven't seen them in the last 30, 45 days, so it appears that somebody's enforcing something. But as, if you drive anywhere from Santa Monica to Malibu, you see the issues that are occurring. And I really encourage the city to address the issue, and perhaps isn't, isn't the right forum, but it's just gonna get worse. And what's great about our city right now is we have so many wonderful things happening and improvements being made, and they're being denigrated by the abuse of the parking. So, to reiterate what Stella said, we as residents certainly don't want to see our parking restricted, because we do use it, you know, for our own personal uses. I think the pier would benefit from this area being restricted from midnight to sunrise and any other things that can be done to, you know, we have homeless people living on benches in this stretch of area. So, as the police or the sheriff patrol this area, it'd be nice to kind of clean the whole area up, and I think everybody would benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. And I can tell you that other parking issues in the city were addressed at the meeting I was at with the sheriffs. So, they're very aware of, of more than just this area, just this issue. Yeah, so, and I'm not sure how that'll be addressed going forward. Sorry Drucker?
Hi, I'm also a resident. We're like six of us together. And I guess my biggest concern was first to be clarified, which thank you very much, so we understand that. If we could have residential permits for this, because, I mean, I have found people parking in front of my house for weeks on end. It just, it's really hard to get parking. And if you have to park in front of your own house, and there, there is no parking. So, it's been a real issue. So, if you could do something with permits, we all greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to address on this issue? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we're back here at the commission. I would ask a question.
Can I make a few comments?
Please.
To start? I first wanted to say that this is our first, first effort to start to deal with the parking in this area. It's not the last. As Chair Pearson mentioned, the City Council Subcommittee on Zoning Ordinance Revisions and Code Enforcement considered some options for dealing with oversized vehicle parking, overnight parking, and some things like that. The reason for bringing this forward is because there is language in the code right now that we can draw from. So, we, our, our goal is to put this in place and do the best that we can with it in terms of enforcement, and then learn from that and bring the, bring ordinances to deal with the other issues as soon as we can get them to you.
Can I ask, Bonnie? Is, is that why Surf Riders midnight to 5:00 and this isn't? Is it an ordinance, or is it? Is it an ordinance, or is it? To answer everybody's question, could this become midnight to 5:00, just like Surf Rider?
It's a possibility. It's something we need to investigate. One of the challenges with this, with any parking restrictions anywhere close to coastal resources, is the mandates of the Coastal Act and the local coastal program that call for not inhibiting public access to coastal resources and amenities visitor-serving uses. So the issue of permit parking is something that can be explored. I think it might be, given the location of the residences on PCH and near all of these really popular visitor amenities, that I think that might be a tough sell, but again, you know, we can certainly look at it. And I lost my train of thought.
Okay. I have a question for Christie. Christie, the city adopted the LA County License requirements. That's our section 508-010. And 504-100A4 says that they can be denied the license if the applicant failed to provide adequate parking or causes traffic-related disturbances. So could this be handled under the licensing?
With respect to that one vendor, that's not really the issue, although I know that that's drawn our attention to it, but there are other issues that this CDP intends to solve.
No, what I'm just saying right now, it appears they're violating that section.
Yeah, this isn't the right form to figure out whether or not they're in violation of the business license ordinance.
Is there somebody in the city who would look at that code?
We'll have Code Enforcement look at it for you.
Okay, thank you. Can we ask the sheriffs?
You, you, you have a question?
We have them here. Sergeant Wynn, can you step forward?
He looks very comfortable. You're making him get up.
He was in front of Lieutenant Royal, so I just picked on him. Either one of you.
I'm working on traffic in Malibu for 202, so I thought he might be able to speak to some of the specific issues.
Yeah, and that's my question. Can you just give us a general layout of what's going on here and what the issues are?
I do, I do just want to mention that Code Enforcement is aware of the vendor parking on PCH, and that's part of an ongoing investigation, and we shouldn't get into this, you know, too much of the specifics here, and remember that this is a generalized CDP for parking restrictions.
Okay, well, what's your generalized opinion of what's going on between Surf Rider and the hotel?
It's not just the vendor parking there. I mean, that is one of the vehicles. There are some motorhomes that park there for long periods of time. In fact, we just cited the lady that lives in the one in front of the gym there about a week and a half ago for overnight camping. You get some oversized vehicles that don't fit in people's driveways up the Sweetwater area that park down there for long periods of time, or just things that they don't have enough room for. You get some of the collateral damage from houses around there that use that area to store cars in, too. So it's, yeah, the vendor parking does take up a lot, but there are a lot of other things in there. Like I said, the motorhomes that park in there, the yard cars that they don't want up in their driveways, or some big trucks, like pickup trucks and stuff that won't go up and down Sweetwater and that area, that park down there for long periods of time. We do have a couple individuals that live in the area up the wash there in the, in that public works, the public area up there, the creek area, that park their vehicles down on PCH. So it's a whole myriad of cars that park down there, so this would solve a lot of problems, not just the vendor problem. And, you know, which would free up space for people to come to the beach and enjoy it and not force them to pay whatever state parks is charging there right now by all the vehicles that are stored on the highway. It's kind of forcing people to go to pay parking instead of utilizing the free parking that, you know, that they're already paying for out of everything else they pay for in California.
Thank you.
If I might make one comment about the abuse potential of this, to address what the residents talked about. Something like this isn't targeting residents, and we're not worried about reasonable use by residents because that turns over and allows the beach-going public to use these spots. People aren't there 24/7. When there aren't, when there's no enforcement power, you have a few chronic abusers, where this is literally 24/7, 365. And to address Coastal's concern, that in itself is an access issue, because if you're going to take away the enforcement in the interest of access, like we don't want to have any restrictions so people can go to the beach, if you turn that around, if you don't give us any enforcement power in this area, that becomes the access issue, because if you extrapolate out what, for instance, the Surf Shack guy's doing to that whole stretch, 24/7, 365, no enforcement, no one goes to the beach there because it's completely landlocked. That's what we're talking about. It's about the abusers, not the residents. I'm all in favor of looking at permits if that's what it would take, but residents aren't the problem because they do move, even visitors. So this is about chronic abuse that creates the access problem Coastal's trying to avoid.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
John, also, to, I think it was Stella that was up here that was asking about the temporary stuff for residents. What do you, five houses there, six houses there? If the residents between Surf Rider and the pier, was it 23038 PCH and the pier light, if they were issued permits for that, they would kind of almost essentially be keeping some of the other people out of there, too, by parking in front of their own houses. And that would give them a nice legal spot to park, and they wouldn't be parking farther up and down the street, too. That wouldn't be such a bad idea for that.
Thank you very much. Any more questions or discussion or motion?
Just a quick one?
Yes?
To Richard, for the signs that are going to be put up, what, 17 signs? Will those say by, except for residents or something? Is that planned? Okay.
The signs that are proposed would say essentially something along the lines of parking no longer than 30 minutes between the hours of 2:00 AM and 4:00 AM. And just to make sure that it's been said in this, we do understand that at this time all of the coastal resources there are closed, but it's still something that the Coastal Commission felt that, you know, folks may want to stop and look at the beach or access the water, even though the beach is closed. So that would allow for that 30-minute window for anybody. You know, I do understand all those access points are closed, and that is in the report.
I'm just trying, I mean, what does Stella do? I mean, does she park there hoping she doesn't get a ticket, or, you know, that's all I'm trying to think of. You know, could there be something on that sign that already reflects that with that change pending, or we just put new signs up?
That's not enough.
She's not in that zone. I move the item as staff recommends.
I would like to make a friendly amendment. And once this thing gets implemented, how quickly can you get back? Look, I think it's real important to make it work. I just want to make sure it's working, right? Because if we do this and it's not working, then we should immediately start trying to figure out something else to make it work. So just if you could put it on your schedule, once you get it implemented, you know, a month, whatever, get back and just let us know that thing is cooking, and if it's working, every okey-dokey.
Yeah, we'll be paying close attention, and as I mentioned, this is the first part of several things that we're looking at doing in council's direction.
Just one more comment. The gentleman who spoke, I had two friends come in over the weekend from a beach community in New Hampshire, and first thing they mentioned to me, said, what the hell are all these cars parked along PCH? Because they would never let them do that back. So just, I understand.
Okay, we have, any more comments? Okay, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Uring?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion, Harris?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 5A, Coastal Development Permit Number 16-053 and Minor Modification 16-014. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening again, Chair Pearson and members of the Planning Commission. This project is a coastal development permit and minor modification on a residentially-zoned property at 3328 Sarah Road. The project site is approximately half a mile north of the Pacific Coast Highway. The subject property is an undeveloped flag lot accessed from Sarah Road via an easement on a neighboring lot. Surrounding properties to the north, south, and west are developed with residential uses, and properties to the east are undeveloped. As shown on this color-coded slope analysis, the property slopes up towards the east, and 60% of the property contains steep slopes, which is shown as blue and red on the map. It looks more like purple in this photo, and the green area to the west is relatively This graphic shows the developable area of the property, and it has been reoriented 90 degrees from the previous slide. The proposed project is for six 999-square-foot greenhouses for the cultivation of an assortment of vegetables and herbs, and those are outlined in blue. A 3,000-square-foot orchard, a gravel service yard with two parking spaces enclosed by retaining walls that do not exceed six feet in height. The service yard is accessed by two six-foot-high solid gates outlined in red. An entry gate on the flag portion of the driveway right here is also proposed. A minor modification to reduce the front yard setback requirement by 50%, resulting in a setback of 32 feet. I guess you can't see my cursor. Right over here is also requested. The front property line was determined by the planning director to be the lot line shared with 3314 Sarah Road, which is over here, and that property is owned by the same property owner as the applicant. The applicant is requesting to reduce the setback requirement to avoid developing on the steep slopes in this area and to minimize grading. Water will be provided by the LA County Waterworks District Number 29, as demonstrated by the conditional will serve letter attached to the agenda report. Each of the six greenhouses would be 999 square feet in size, totaling 5,994 square feet of onsite development, which is below the maximum allowed total development square footage, or TDSF, of 9,523 square feet. The maximum height of each greenhouse is 18 feet. The six greenhouses would be made of glass and have been conditioned to prohibit highly reflective materials and to be made of non-glary glass. The framing would be earth tone. Greenhouses are only permitted on parcels that are at least one acre. The subject parcel is approximately 3.26 acres in size and is large enough to accommodate the six greenhouses. All retaining and freestanding walls would be a maximum of six feet, as well as the three gates that are proposed on the site. The entry gate on the flag portion of the lot would be solid, and the bottom areas up to 42 inches in height and be permeable up to six feet. Non-exempt grading would be limited to 438 cubic yards for leveling the driveway and the orchard areas, as shown on the grading plan. Greenhouses are allowed as a permitted use in RR zones, and orchards are permitted as an accessory use. In this case, the orchard may be established only if it is incidental to the greenhouses. The project has been conditioned to require completion of the six greenhouses concurrent with the installation of the orchard. The greenhouses will be used to cultivate greens for restaurant use. Story poles were installed on the project site to show the footprints and heights of all the greenhouses. The story poles are not visible from scenic roads or from public viewing areas. This is the driveway, and the adjacent property, 3314 Sarah Road, is screened by this temporary blacks construction fencing. And this is a view facing northwest towards the Sarah Retreat. And the same, the same direction showing the house under construction at 3314 Sarah Road. Staff has added two conditions of approval to the draft resolution. Subsequent to the release of the staff report, a water well was discovered on the property. The water well was likely installed decades ago, however, components of the well appear to be newer, and a condition to obtain approvals for the well components have been added to ensure that all components of the water well are permitted. In addition, a chain-link fence appears to enclose the entire property of about 3 1/4 acres, so a condition to ensure free passage of wildlife by creating openings in the fence have also been added to the resolution. In summary, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 17-35, approving CDP Number 16-53 and Minor Modification Number 16-14. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution with those two conditions added. They aren't in the packet, so we would propose them tonight.
Thank you for that clarification. Disclosures, please.
Commissioner Pearson and I visited the property, didn't learn it, saw the fence, and that's covered. Other than that, everything was covered in the staff report.
I visited the property with Marnie Randall and walked it, saw the fence, saw the well.
No disclosure.
As Mr. Uring said, we visited the property, met with Marnie Randall, and there was another person there, I believe, worked on the property, or actually, I'm not sure who it was, architect, no idea. Saw the fence, saw the well. My question was from the staff report, or the photos, was it looked like it had been freshly graded, but being there showed that it actually wasn't. It was just not freshly graded, so I was curious about that, and that's it. Questions of staff?
The fence between this property and the house, what happens when the house is completed? Does that fence come down?
I believe that is temporary construction fencing that would come down after construction is complete.
Okay, and now on the fence that was put up around the whole property, what is your resolution? Because what I'm wondering is the code requires a certain type of fence, not just a hole and a six-foot fence. So can you tell me exactly what the resolution is?
The condition that is proposed is up on the screen, so that the, there will be openings in the fence that would allow for the passage of wildlife. The entire fence isn't being required to be split rail since it's not an ESHA right here. It's just wildlife permeable so that wildlife would be able to get through one side from one side to the other.
So how many, how many 12-foot-wide holes? This is a fence that's probably, what, 1,000 feet long?
We would work with...
I mean, one or two doesn't cut it.
Well, I mean, it actually probably would. We've reviewed this type of question with the city biologist before, and a couple of openings were all that he felt was necessary. If you'd like to make a specific recommendation, we can include that in the condition.
I will, thanks.
Yeah, and just to follow up, Chair Mazza, that fence goes, that's a long fence. It goes up one side of the hill. So a couple of openings, more than a couple, are probably needed to make that thing really work.
Okay, no more questions. Going to open the public hearing, and we have Marnie Randall here. Marnie? Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. I'd like to thank staff for all your work, and I have no comments on the report. The fence, I think it appears longer than it really is because you're seeing fences on neighboring properties also that look almost identical. But, you know, I have worked on other projects where we've made fences wildlife-permeable for Coastal by putting 10-foot-wide openings every 20 or 40 feet. You know, it's up to you. I'm not, I'm trying to avoid having someone have to go all the way up the hill and take the whole fence and bring it down. That's all. And I think you can make it wildlife-permeable by putting openings in it. You know, animals are pretty adaptive. So if you, and I'm here to answer any questions you have or address any comments you might have.
Thank you.
I forgot one disclosure. I did talk to staff about, in the LIP for... I did talk to staff about, in the LIP for greenhouses, there's two sections. And one of them appears to be allow primary use. One allows primary use for greenhouses. The other section above this states that it has to be non-commercial. If it's non-commercial, it has to be an ancillary use. I subsequently got a email from Lily saying this is a non, this is a commercial use. So it's allowable. Is that, that's correct. They're going to use this to, for commercial use.
They're planning to grow greens to provide to a restaurant that they're associated with, yes. And, and they'll probably eat some of them, too.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve this project with the two recommended amendments, except on the gate amendment. I'd like to have a ten-foot opening every forty feet. And I would also like-
You mean fence or gate?
Fence.
The fence.
A fence opening every forty feet of ten feet. And I'd also like to restrict the greenhouses for no growing of pot or hemp.
Can I ask why you're doing that? Is that a request from the neighbors?
No, but-
My only thought is, if this sewer project goes through Sarah Retreat, they may need a local source. To keep, so, and I, I don't know what that means. I'm right about this stuff, but I-
I'm just, I'm just being proactive in the future since next year it's going to be legal, and who knows? And this is a commercial greenhouse.
I think there's an, my only, I think there's more regulation that we need right now at federal state level to deal with that, so I don't-
That's another discussion. Is there a second on that motion? In Not Hearing One It Dies, do we have another motion? Steve?
I'll take John's motion, accepting the, the pot.
You mean not exempting?
Exempt, yeah. Forget the pot.
There's no discussion of pot other than what John brought up, so.
And I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hang, hang on, can we-
We're closed.
Can, can we have a roll call, please? Wait, okay. Step four, what, what's your name?
My name is Freddie Corey. I live in the Tivoli Cove condominiums. I've been there thirty-some years. And my unit is right on the end, close to where the proposal of this new building of a house is.
Sir, you're on the wrong subject. This is about-
It was a different item.
You have the wrong application.
This is the wrong-
I work for some greenhouses in Sarah Canyon.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, yeah, wrong item.
So are we going to get to the house that you-
Which house?
I don't think we have one on-
Oh, because I got a notice about, on the fifth, there would be, there would be a meeting about the proposal to add a house on Latigo Shore.
Oh, that item got, it got a continued to another date. It got continued till August seventh.
Oh, great. So you'll send out another notice then?
Yes, August seventh. All right, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Kathleen, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and-
Thank you.
Thank you, Marnie. And I'm going to call for a quick, try and make it eight-minute recess, and we'll be back at eight-twenty. Start. Six A is not continued, correct? Is that, that's not what we did earlier?
No, we didn't continue.
You just want to, we're still have, we still have six A, but your recommendation was to bring it back. Is it? You're not asking for a continuation here, correct?
Um, you're right.
So we, we wanted to bring it, bring it back.
Yes, our recommendation is to-
But we're still going to open the item?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted, there's a little confusion among several of us on that.
Yeah, no, and I, I think I probably confused the issue. But no, our recommendation is to bring it back on August seventh and to work with the applicant in the meantime.
Okay, so we're going to open the item anyhow?
Yeah.
Okay, so six A is, actually got no number on it. Soho Little Beach House Permit Conformance Review. Can we have a staff report, please?
All right, I'm going to speak to this item. The planner Carlos Contreras is, is not here, but I will do the best that I can. I am informed on the project and should be able to answer any questions you have. So on April third, two thousand seventeen, Soho came before the commission for a one-year review. The slide presentation isn't on the screen. Parker?
Parker, can we get the presentation for six A?
Thank you. So Soho came before the commission for a one-year compliance review to assess compliance with the findings and conditions of approval as contained in Conditional Use Permit Amendment Number Fifteen dash zero zero two. There were no changes to service area hours with respect to that project. There were concerns regarding shared parking with the adjacent restaurant on Pacific Coast Highway at two-two-seven oh six that was raised in letters and correspondence that was received by the commission at that time. So the one-year compliance review was continued to this meeting tonight, June fif, two thousand seventeen, at which time the Planning Commission had also requested that a review on the adjacent Nobu Restaurant property also come on June fifth, which is the item following this one. So this item, which is respect to the Soho restaurant, is bounded on the north by PCH and on the south by the Pacific Ocean. Properties in the area are developed with a mix of commercial uses. As previously reported, a condition of approval was applied to the project, requiring staff to report to the commission. And at that time, when staff came before the commission, there was a question concerning a storage container and a screen wall that existed on the site, as well as an area of service area that wasn't previously approved. The applicant has since complied with the conditions of approval, and those items have been removed. In two thousand seven, a joint-use parking agreement was approved, which allowed the Soho site to provide ten parking spaces to the adjacent property currently occupied by Nobu. There have been no changes to the service area at Soho, and there have been no requests to change the parking arrangement. However, the applicant has indicated that off-site parking is currently being used at two-two-six-one-nine Pacific Coast Highway. There is no existing conditional use permit or joint-use parking agreement to allow for this off-site parking. The employee, the parking is being provided for the purposes of employee parking pursuant to an agreement with that property owner. The applicant has been working with staff to address this parking issue and complete compliance of their conditional use permit. As part of that is to evaluate and assess a joint-use parking agreement with the off-site parking, as well as a conditional use permit amendment related to the Soho site to address the off-site parking. Staff will finalize a review of the report and analyze whether or not the off-site parking condition being proposed by Soho is an acceptable, whether or not staff would recommend approval of the proposal, but it will be coming before the Planning Commission to make a determination as to whether or not those off-site parking arrangements are adequate. So for that reason, staff has requested a continuance of this item since they are currently working with the representatives for Soho on these specific arrangements related to the off-site parking for employee parking. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any disclosures?
No.
I just visited the site earlier, met with Andy Vaughn, the general manager, didn't learn much more. Do you have anything to say in the report?
Okay, and also, I, I also met with Andy Vaughn before the staff report came out, and he let me know they're doing everything to be in complete compliance. Questions?
Go ahead, Steve.
Two questions. One, are they parking anywhere on PCH right now?
I have no evidence to suggest that Soho is parking on Pacific Coast Highway.
In some of, and I don't know where the, the other building is where they're, they're across the street parking there. Some of those buildings had agreements with the Coastal Commission, right? That said that spaces were supposed to be available for visitors. Is this one of those buildings?
Staff is aware that the Coastal Commission did issue conditions on certain coastal development permits requiring that parking be available to public and beach access. So in our review of any joint-use parking agreement, we would be looking at the conditions of approval on the site that's providing the off-site parking.
But where the parking now, is that one of those sites?
I don't have the research on that at this time.
I believe it, it is mentioned. We just got the, the records were off-site, and so we've asked for them to be brought back. It's part of the reason we've, like, we've requested continuance, but it does appear-
We're at least looking at that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. My first question is, when you come back, will you tell us whether or not, there's evidence in your report here that they've been paying for parking off-site? There's a bunch of invoices, et cetera, for fifty spaces, I believe. And I, I would like to know when you come back if they have been paying the city tax, and has it been collected? Which is required, ten percent. And that's Section MMC three point one-two-point oh-one-oh through oh-three-oh. And then if they have a joint parking agreement, is the city named in it? That's Section seventeen forty-eight oh-four-oh. Now, Part D of Section forty-eight, seventeen forty-eight oh-five-oh says that required parking cannot be used by any person- by any person who does not occupy the premises for which it is required. So I'd like to know when they come back with alternative parking, if the property they are parking on has fulfilled their parking requirements and has excess parking. And as far as, again, I asked Kristi earlier about the municipal licensing code covering parking, traffic and parking disturbances, and whether or not this would apply to this case. Now, I understand that as far as the neighbors are, we've gotten letters from the neighbors, and it's almost impossible to tell who's a Nobu Parker and who's a Soho Parker and all this. So I'd just like to have some way of looking at both of those, at least at the same meeting maybe, or, or have some analysis of how that's determined. Because I, I read somewhere in here that there's a, I think it was Soho, had a sticker that the employee had to put on their car, and they'd get fired if they didn't put it on their car or something. That could have been Nobu, but I think it was this one. We need to know somehow how we police this.
In terms of who's parking on PCH, that we, we can provide you the information that we have, but there, these aren't the only two restaurants in the area or the only two employers. And so, you know, it's, it's going to be challenging to say exactly who's doing what.
If there's no questions, I'd like a motion to continuance, continue to, what was the date? August 7th, 2017.
Well, hang on, with this, yeah, we're gonna, we haven't even opened public hearing yet, so...
Well, are we going to have a public hearing?
Well, we...
If you just have one speaker, why don't we just hear?
Yeah, we do not just have one speaker, we have multiple speakers. Three speakers. We have a few speakers. Okay, so hang on a sec, Ken. I, I also had a question. Maybe this is for Bonnie. What, do you have a response to Ken's letter disagreeing with some of the findings?
We feel that there are, while the, we think that looking at the, the difference between required parking and overflow parking or supplemental parking is a, a potential way to solve these problems, we feel like it, it should be memorialized in some way. And we have begun discussions with the applicants about how best to do that, whether it's, I think some sort of use permit, according to the code, would be necessary for the off-site parking that they're using. We'd also like to amend the CUP to make it clear how the overall parking for the use is being operated. So at this point, that, that's our response, that staff feels like this should be memorialized in some way.
Can I ask you a question? We had both of these restaurants come in originally asking for a CUP under certain facts, like they had X number of employees. Are you going to look at what they originally applied for and what's the, on the ground now? For example, I was shocked when I heard 50 employees.
That's, that's some of the information that we've been looking at as part of our evaluation of this.
Okay, I'm gonna give the speakers a chance to speak before we just make a motion here. We have Ken Erlich followed by Krista Roberts, followed by Bill Kelly. So public hearing is open.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners and staff. We appreciate the opportunity to speak. We also appreciate the fact that in the spirit of goodwill, our client, Mr. Thomas Leonard and Don Neil Sanders, have been, are here tonight and have been working with us very closely with city staff in recent weeks. So we've made significant progress. What I want to do here is to highlight an issue that I think is much greater than the one before the commission. It's the issue of required parking versus overflow parking and the way the code reads. And Planning Commissioner, excuse me, Planning Director Blue alluded to it, but I want to make sure that, that the commission is sensitive to the issue. Our reading of the municipal code states that if you meet your required parking, which this site does, Soho House clearly meets its parking requirement under its CUP on its own premises, then the issue of off-site parking isn't regulated by the code. The, the statute or the, the code that Mr., Commissioner Mazza referred to, to our eye, reads that if you need off-site parking to comply with your parking requirements, then the following instances kick in, the 300 feet, the traffic laws, et cetera. So Soho House comes here wanting to be compliant, ready, willing and able to continue our dialogue with the city, which has been productive over recent weeks, and it may well end up in an agreement. But the agreement would be completely gratuitous and voluntary on Soho House behalf because the municipal code doesn't affect off-site, non-required parking. Here, what Soho House is volunteering to do is to continue our discussions about parking employees off-site such that it relieves traffic along PCH and it, it, it's more convenient for patrons as well as, as the businesses that are around there. However, the issue frankly is, is one in which whether the city wants to confront what to do with off-site, non-required parking when a use complies with its parking requirements. All that said, Soho House will continue our discussions with city staff. We hope that they'll culminate quickly. We intend them to be, we intend the discussions to culminate quickly. We intend to answer all the questions asked by all the commissioners tonight about the off-site CUPs that are providing us with parking, and whether they have excess parking, whether they're paying taxes, et cetera. All that'll be addressed, but I think the issue that we raised about non-required parking is critical as you deal with these issues in the future. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Krista Roberts, followed by Bill Kelly.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I just wanted to show you a picture. I know it's kind of silly because you can't see it, but it's two cars that are parked in front of my building, and they park there at 5:45 in the morning. And they got out with their little white aprons and they walked to the restaurants. Nobu or Soho, I'm not sure, but I live five buildings south of Nobu, and we never have any parking. Basically, that's it. And as far as the violations that are going on, providing off-site parking, I walk my dog a couple of times a night, every night. And the valets for both Nobu and Soho are all over the place. They're on the street, they're in back of Christina Development, they're across the street from me in a little parking area. They're in the place that they're supposed to be, across from Soho in an underground area, but they're also all over the street, the valets. And of course, the people that work there are parking all over the street. So basically, now that I'm retired, I can't have my book club people over, I can't have my red hats over for a luncheon, I can't even have a friend over because there's no parking at all, ever. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill Kelly?
Good evening. I'm Bill Kelly at 22548 Pacific Coast Highway. I'm the president of homeowners. I represent 42 owners, including myself. And Gerald Sussman from 22626 could not be here tonight, but he asked me to bring us a memo that he was going to read to you on April 3rd before it was moved to the, tonight, and he's back east. I've given it to staff and I asked you respectfully to read his memo. I'm 42 years in the Malibu outrigger, and here's what I deal with every day. We have parking in front for three cars. We have red zones. We need, we have a red zone just before we come into our parking lot from the west side, or the north side, excuse me, from the west side coming down. And to get in there, we have a red zone. D'Amore is the pizza place, parks their truck there 24/7. And then there are two cars that park, they both work at Nobu. They rotate two different shifts, and they park illegally. I have talked to the sheriff's department, I'm sorry they're not here. They have told me and given me a number and called, they want me to police it for them so they can come write tickets. The only time tickets are ever written in front of a building is when they have volunteers on the weekends, like Saturday morning. It's a racetrack from the pier down the street. It might as well be one lane with Nobu. Now you have Soho House and Soho Hotel. Soho Hotel now has red zones in front of the east and west end and a long white curb. I don't know what the white curb is, but that's only taking up probably 10 or 12 parking spots. Staff says, your report, you don't know where they park. All the help that work at Nobu and at Soho park either in front, and they double park all day long and they switch shifts. The sheriff does nothing about that. They park all the way down to Carbon Canyon. You can go sit in front of my building and watch everybody come down and walk through the streets. At night, we walk it every night, my wife and I. And when you go up to the light at Nobu, I'm sorry the sheriff isn't here to hear this, but there have been more accidents in front of Nobu and Soho House since they've been open than there have ever been while McDonald's has been there. And when you try to walk across the street from the ocean side forward, when the light changes, with the valet guys coming out of there, they can go left or right, and they don't even look to see if the pedestrians are going across. Parking is just a mess on that street, and the road is a mess, and it should be looked at.
Thank you, Bill. Bill, can I ask you a quick question before you go?
You certainly may.
Maybe a two-parter. Have you noticed any difference since code enforcement's been out there? Has the situation changed at all? In our staff report, I know code enforcement's been out looking at the situation. Is there any difference in the parking out there?
I've noticed on two Saturday mornings that the white volunteers have been there. One thing I didn't mention is, also what I deal with is, when the help comes, they're busboys for Nobu. They go across the street to Malibu Liquor, and they come across and they go underneath a walkway that I have facing PCH, and they all have their beer and, and smoke a joint before they go to work. And I have to police that. I call the sheriff, nobody comes out.
Let me ask you one more question. So you can sometimes tell whether it's Nobu or Soho? Because this issue's Soho we're talking about now, we're getting to Nobu next. It seems like you somehow, sometimes have an idea of which, which location they work at?
Yes, according to what they dress and carry their knives.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that hasn't spoke yet that would like to address this issue? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do you have a motion or discussion?
I have one question. Can I bring Ken back up for a second? Ken? Are employees from Soho parking on PCH?
We have zero information, well, number one, the answer, the short answer is no. There are enforcement measures from Soho House and from Nobu that prevents employees from parking on PCH.
Well, we know it's not working for Nobu, I'm, let's do Soho right now. Real tight and clear, that they are not parking on PCH.
Yes, Commissioner.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we move this item to August 7th, 2017.
Can I ask a quick question first, just for clarification? I'm just trying to kind of think this through in my head. We've got conflicting input, and then, and then there's another question in terms of kind of the stated rules for how many spots we need per service area. If, if the, if the input is that they just don't line up, where we don't have enough parking for what's actually going on there, where do we end up in that kind of a scenario? Like where, where the stated numbers, if the input is that we have the right number of parking spots per the number of seats, but the reality is we don't have enough parking because nobody can park their cars, what do we do with an impasse like that? I just want to understand kind of process.
That's the big question for next meeting.
Yeah, you'll, though, we're going to bring all of that back to you, but just let me underscore that there are in fact two concepts here. One is the required number of parking spaces for the uses that are approved on the site to make sure that only those uses are being done and that all the required parking is done on site. And then sometimes you have a business that's more successful than others and generates more traffic. And in this case, we're looking at adding a condition to address the additional traffic, which would sort of memorialize the use of off-site parking for employees. And that, those wouldn't be counted toward the required parking on site, obviously. But, and they wouldn't be required parking for the uses. They would instead be an additional condition to try and mitigate the impacts that we're now observing in the field.
Thank you.
Yeah, my motion to continue is to have those questions I asked before answered. And one of those, I want to be clear, is that as far as I read our codes, you cannot cause a public nuisance. And no matter how many seats you have, that's why I want to look at the original CUP, see if they disclose the number of employees, et cetera, and whether or not there is a parking nuisance, because the city has to solve the problem in that section of the highway, or we might as well just close it.
Second? Close the highway?
Yeah. Before the water washes over...
That's an option I hadn't thought of.
I'll second your motion.
Excuse, Chair Pearson, may I just interject? I just want to let you know that when I do the Nobu report that follows, I'm asking for us to come back on August 21st. So I just want you to keep in mind if you want us to come back with Soho and Nobu on the same night, or if you wanted to proceed with...
I'd like to amend my motion to August 21st.
I'll second.
So, so to be clear, we're going to have both properties on the same night, August 21st, is the plan.
Well, that's, hasn't happened yet, but that's, that's probably going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings? Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving on to Item 6B. We have the Nobu Restaurant Permit Conformance Review. Can we have a report, please?
Yes, Chair Pearson and commissioners. So as requested by the Planning Commission at its April 3rd, 2017 meeting, the item before the commission is a compliance review of Conditional Use Permit Number 06-009 for the property at 22706 Pacific Coast Highway. The subject property is developed with a commercial building approved by the Planning Commission for a restaurant in 2007. It currently accommodates Nobu Restaurant as the tenant. That property is identified on your slide in red. The adjacent property to the west at 22716 Pacific Coast Highway accommodates Soho's Little Beach House Malibu, a private restaurant, as its tenant, and it is highlighted in the purple box. On April 3rd, Soho's one-year permit review came before the commission. At that time, we received multiple letters from residents expressing concerns about off-site parking on PCH. As a result, the Planning Commission at that time requested staff return with a report on the permit for the property occupied by Nobu. In February of 2017, staff put the property owner and the current restaurant tenant Nobu on written notice that the current operations were not in conformance with and were violating the conditions of approval. Specifically, the outdoor service area had been expanded and valet parking was taking place off-site. Staff directed the tenant and the property owner to immediately cease and desist and to stop all unpermitted activity. Staff also advised at that time that an amendment of the permit would be required or modifications to the conditions of approval, as well as a new joint-use parking agreement for additional off-site parking locations. The approved service area layout illustrates, as shown in red and blue on the slide above, the 3,700 square feet of approved service area. With the furniture layout, it shows a prox, a total of 222 seats. There's 118 indoor seats and 104 outdoor seats. The city environmental health administrator also allowed a capacity of 249 seats based upon the septic system. upon the septic system. Staff inspected the site on April 19th, 2017 and determined that the unpermitted expanded service area totaled approximately 1,000 square feet with an additional approximate 84 seats, which is highlighted in yellow in the slide. Please note that after publication of this report and after consultation with counsel for Nobu, the unpermitted service area was removed and it was removed last Thursday on June 1st. At the time the project was approved, 74 onsite parking spaces were required. The site could only accommodate 64 parking spaces, so a joint-use parking agreement addressed this deficiency. It allowed the adjacent property at 22716 PCH to provide the subject site with 10 needed parking spaces. Therefore, Nobu is currently approved to operate with 64 onsite parking spaces and 10 off-site parking spaces at Soho. The current tenant contends that since the expanded outdoor seating area has been removed, that they are in full compliance with the conditions of approval. In short, that only 64 onsite parking spaces are required, 64 onsite parking spaces are provided, and the permit does not bar off-site parking by valets, employees, or patrons. It is estimated at this time that, based upon the number of employees per shift, that approximately 70 parking spaces are required for employees.
For employees?
Condition number seven of the conditional use permit provides that any questions of intent or interpretation of any condition of approval can be resolved by the planning manager upon written request of such interpretation. Based upon review of the following pertinent conditions and findings made by the Planning Commission in resolution number 07-02, the Planning Director maintains that all parking associated with the use shall be maintained onsite except as permitted by a joint-use parking agreement. The conditions include, or in the findings and conditions include that the two parking lots will efficiently manage the parking for both restaurants, that the valet parking will be used for all uses associated with the project, that no valet staging or valet parking of cars on PCH was to occur, that the onsite, that adequate parking would be provided to meet all onsite uses, and that off-site restaurant patron parking would not displace public parking or beach access, and finally, that the proposed restaurant would not interfere with the parking and circulation for the area. Staff has observed valet parking of cars on Pacific Coast Highway as well as off-site, with valet parking attendants not using the crosswalk and jaywalking across Pacific Coast Highway to the off-site parking. Employees have also been reported to be parking off-site on Pacific Coast Highway, displacing public parking. The photo from Saturday taken by our code enforcement shows a valet parking attendant jaywalking to off-site parking. So Nobu has been operating in violate, from this Saturday. Nobu has been operating in violation of its permit by not maintaining all the parking for all uses associated with the project onsite. Staff has received correspondence from residents in the vicinity of Nobu recently for this meeting and have continued to express concerns with the adverse impacts the use is having on parking and circulation in the area, including lack of parking along Pacific Coast Highway due to employees and valet parking of cars on Pacific Coast Highway. As of last week, Nobu's council has been working with staff to address the non-compliance. The unpermitted service area was removed last Thursday, so staff supports a determination that the off-site parking requires an amendment to the permit so that staff and the commission can adequately evaluate the impacts on parking and circulation in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending to the Planning Commission to continue this item to the August 21st Planning Commission meeting to allow staff time to continue to work with the tenant on compliance and off-site parking. Alternatively, the Planning Commission could also direct staff to schedule a hearing for the revocation of the permit, or it could conclude that they are operating under the conditions as required. And this is just a slide of the environmental health approval indicating that the 249 seats was the maximum allowed seats onsite. And so with that, that concludes staff's presentation. I am available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I just, I do want to ask a question quickly, I'll turn it over to the Commissioners for other questions. Did you say that employee parking is, takes 70 spaces?
Yes, we were advised that employees, there were about 70 employees per shift.
So that's an average per shift? I mean, I'm sure it's not the same Monday morning as it is Saturday afternoon.
I did not ask that specific question. We asked only the general question of how much employee parking and how many employees they had, so we can begin to evaluate and assess whether or not the parking can be accommodated and how.
Did, did you assume in that, that every employee drives their own car or how does that, what's the assumption there, just out of curiosity?
No assumption as to whether they carpool. I don't think we've gotten into that much detail, whether they take the bus or any other types of service or vehicle travel, I don't know. It was only, we only just started meeting with them last week, so we're just in the initial discussions, so that's just our initial number.
Okay, and since I started questions first, we'll do questions before disclosures. Steve?
Yeah, a couple of quick ones. They originally had 222 seats. How many do they have today? Do we know?
Well, now they should be back to the 222 seats. I did not go back in and count the seats. I do know just from doing walkthroughs and looking at the floor furniture plans that were approved and then comparing them to what we've seen out there, it appears consistent.
Okay. They're parking, where are they parking cars across the street? Not on PCH, are they parking them?
So at, at one point, they were parking at 22729 Pacific Coast Highway, but they are no longer doing that.
That was the Shell, that was the Shell station?
The abandoned gas station. And the, based upon what I was told by the code enforcement who went out to take the photographs is their belief was that they were parking at the office building behind the gas station, or at the abandoned gas station.
And who owns that?
I do not know who owns that. I do know that code enforcement has worked, has, as of today, contacted the property owner and the tenant.
Okay. Let me, and I may be getting ahead of myself. Let's assume that we go to the revocation route, just for discussion. If that happens, how fast can they come back after their permit is revoked? I need to phase it another way. Is, can we put a time limit that says we don't want to see them for six months? Three months?
I mean, I, I'm not aware of anything in the code that specifies how quickly somebody could come back after a revocation. I don't, I don't...
But can we put a time limit on it and say you can't do it for some period of time?
Well, there's, there's an automatic.
Wait, how do you sound?
And all that, right? Well, I mean, you've got, you've got somebody, and here's, here's where we're coming from. Look, this has been going on for a long time, long time. Now, you know, if you go back to February 1st, the very first meeting I was at, all right, there was a note in there that says in August of last year, they discovered these guys were parking off-site and, and sort of screwing up. We've got letters from people all over PCH and saying, you know, it's, it's a mess and apparently what we're hearing is, in talking to the code enforcement people, these guys are sort of ignoring what the heck we're saying. And that, you know, that's nasty stuff.
So here's all I want to say. Before you reach any conclusions, we would want to give the property owners notice and opportunity to be heard. We want to hear what their evidence are. They may have information that contradicts what the staff has gathered and then based on that, if you found that there were a violation, then you would want to look at that violation in context and make sure that you are not imposing any conditions that were unreasonable in light of all the circumstances.
And I will do, I'll keep an open mind as we hear the stuff.
It's just too, it's just too early, so I don't want to get into...
I just have one other question. Let's assume that we do go the revocation route. Just, just, just as we're thinking through this process, Norm Haney's property, Norm has been an accomplice or at least an enabler of these people. Is there any way, if we do the revocation route, you can put his property on the same process? I don't know how to do that.
There's nothing to revoke.
Well, he's got a permit on his, for whatever he's doing on his property, parking cars. Right? I mean, look, just a question. I don't know how to do that. I'm just, it's a, they don't even have to answer now, let's just think about it.
I know. I just, okay, and I, and just let me, I appreciate that, yeah, I don't have to answer that. So I won't. But I will, but I will say this, that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a dangerous proposition when the government, and you are the government now, gets ahead of itself. And so I think it's important, I mean, the, the questions that you raise are good, they're out on the table, staff can investigate, but let's stay away from drawing any conclusions till after we've had a chance to hear it.
Keep an open mind. I'm done.
Yes. This is sort of a technical question. You, you mentioned that the public health person said that they could have 249 seats. What relevance does he have or she?
That just reflects the capacity of the septic system and it went to the issue of expanding the seating area beyond the capacity of the septic system.
Okay, now is there any, and this is another theoretical, but is there any relationship to the number of seats and the septic? If you have a restaurant that's running full capacity all the time, do they look at that? I mean, you know, you go on open table, try to get a reservation, it's always full, so...
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, my question is...
Let me just say, the, the 249 seat limit was part of the environmental health review when the whole application was coming through in 2007. So they looked at the design of the septic system and limited the number of seats based on the design of the septic system. So that's, that's just an operational issue.
Okay, so if we look at this again, it's 10 years later, and we look at what I've been told is the largest grossing restaurant in California, does that affect how they would analyze it 10 years later? It's the same septic tank, right?
I think it's a technical question, if I may, Chair's asking is whether or not, and we, none of us are going to know this, but whether or not the calculation of capacity is based on any presumption of vacancy or, you know, whether it's at maximum capacity, 240 occupants the whole time that it's open, or whether there are some assumptions in there that, you know, are, that it won't be as full as it is, right? That's the question.
That's the question.
We'll, we'll get that answer for you.
If you're gonna bring that back and then...
From the environmental science, yeah.
And then again, in reading this, I was struck by how much money is being paid to park off-site by these restaurants? And again, I would like to know how much money is due to the city for the parking tax when you come back and whether or not it's been collected. If there's no other questions, I'm gonna make a motion to...
No, hang on, hang on, hang on. Other questions? He, he's like, he wants to be the chair, it's okay.
No, I'm thinking about it. I prefaced it with, if there are no other questions.
Jeff?
Yes. Kristi?
Your mic?
Sorry.
What's the standard of, the evidentiary standard we're looking at for this motion? It looks like the MC, the municipal code says that, well, as staff has presented it, it says that if there's cause to believe that grounds for revocation exist. So is that what we're looking at? Is it, we're looking at sort of where, is it whether there's probable cause to think that there might be something going on? Is that, is that our standard or are we looking at a, at a higher standard?
Not to be cute, but this motion is just to continue, so, you know, we don't need anything. But I think what they're looking for is cause to have a hearing and yes, I think you can, you'd be, any, any probable cause to have a hearing. It doesn't have to be even probably guilty. You can, you know, have the hearing in order to get the information and satisfy your interest.
Okay, well then at the risk of government getting ahead of itself, assuming that, that we find that there's probable cause, that whenever we get around to finding that, and then we have a hearing on it, and the testimony we get, and then we're talking about a fairly substantial asset here, the testimony we get is not sworn. The evidentiary standards are a little scary in terms of what we, what we do and what we don't receive. Is there, is there any obligation on us to do anything more than just sit and take in whatever is said and, and then make a more probable than not determination?
So luckily, nobody goes to jail at the end of any of this and so some of the due process concerns that you're raising have to do with when, you know, there's a liberty interest at stake. This is in the end, just a land use decision, it's just a matter of making sure we're regulating lands. This is different than the normal applications because Nobu has vested rights and those rights are important and the California Constitution and the United States Constitution protect them and you know that, and our processes protect them. That's why when we come to, if you were to come to a revocation hearing, you'd find that it's a higher standard, that you'd have to find, you know, evidence of actual non-compliance. And we even, Commissioner Euring is already thinking ahead of, well, when can they come back? You know, so I think there's just sort of an intuitive understanding that these are important rights and in the end, we want to have, you know, a successful, reasonable use of that property and in a way that is compliant. So the best solution, the quickest way to get there is to hopefully staff will successfully be able to come back to you with some voluntary measures that will avoid all of this.
More, just because we haven't done this before. We haven't ever had a revocation hearing that I can recall. But you represent a lot of different cities and I'm sure that you have more experience in this and, and so what is, what is the typical outcome of one of these situations? Is it, is it that the city and the applicant sit down and negotiate new or modified or tighter provisions for the C, for the CUP and then that CUP gets put into place? Is that how it typically outcome, the typical outcome of a situation like this?
Well, it kind of goes into two big categories. I mean, sometimes you just have a scofflaw who's just reluctant to ever comply and, you know, I know people complain that code enforcement is slow and it is slow because its goal is to try and get compliance and sometimes you got to get through the psychological blocks. And other times, you know, you have a situation where, and I'm not saying for sure that this is the case with Nobu, but I'll pretend for a second, in the, in the best light that you're looking at someone who's, you know, success has kind of gotten away with them and they've, you know, kind of forgot to go back to text and see what the rules are and now they're kind of being brought in. It sounds like their options in a very general way are going to be to reduce their operations to comply with their current standards or to come up with a way to avoid the impacts that their additional intensity of use have caused in order to maintain or, you know, find somewhere in between what they've got now and what they've been approved to do where they can operate without causing the impacts.
Question?
Yeah, just one other one. This is continued to August 27th or something, late August?
Well, so far staff has made a recommendation, but August 21st was the recommendation, but the public hearing would need to happen.
Well, but just thinking out loud, I mean, if, can we pull that date as far forward as we can, just because, I mean, if we can't change that?
Well, you want to solve it.
All I'm thinking is that right now we know there's impact to the neighborhood, so the closest we can bring it up, the less impact over the summer to those residents is all I'm thinking through. So what would be the process if we wanted to get it as early as possible, I guess is my main question.
This, the recommended continuance date is based on what we anticipate would be needed to continue working with the applicant and then also juggle what we've already got going on. So that's, that's what we think.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that? If they are in violation at the present point, you're going to continue to, the city continues to enforce the codes until we have a hearing. So they're, if they're using a parking facility they're not supposed to, they can't use it, right?
I, I got a question related to Ken's letter that he submitted. Is it against their CUP to, to his point, if he's right, to change where their service area is as opposed to enlarge it?
The, and again, I'm sure the applicant wants to present his side, but the, yeah, but the...
I'm asking the theoretical question because it seems to be an issue and I don't know the answer, actually.
Right. In general, the applicants have requested that I, as a planning director, administratively approve changes to the... approve changes to the service area. I've indicated I'm not comfortable doing that. I don't feel that that is within the realm, given the, the code enforcement activity on the property, that that's appropriate. So that's, that's my take on that.
Well, let me ask you a different way. And if Restaurant A has, submits a service area with a plan, like we normally see, and then, a year later, they're still serving the same amount of customers, but they have a different configuration on that service area, is that against their, their CUP?
Typically, the service area will be shown on a plan that accompanies the agenda report, that supports the resolution that, that you all approve. In some cases, it, I can recall one case where we included conditions that provided some flexibility about relocating inside, or outside service area inside when there's inclement weather, but that wasn't specified specifically on their plan. So there are, there could be cases where there's some flexibility.
Okay.
That wasn't the case here.
Okay. Before we do have any motions, I'd like to do the public hearing. A lot of people have waited to speak on this issue. Is that okay? Do you have another?
Just one last question. Jeff mentioned that we hadn't had a revocation hearing. What are we doing on bull revise? Is that a rec, revocation hearing still? I mean, I haven't heard about that in a long time.
The last direction from the council, or the commission, was to bring that back in, I want to say, August, so we've got that...
And that was a revocation hearing we were having, right?
Right. We'll be reporting to you on status.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, then, if it's all right, I'm going to open the public hearing with a few speakers, starting with Ken Erlich, followed by Frank Nielsen and Damon Geiser, if I'm reading that right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, just a prefatory comment. With the chair and the commission's indulgence, I may be more than three minutes as I have a brief PowerPoint presentation. I assure you I will go as quickly as I can. In addition to that, I've been doing this a long time. I've never, ever been a part of a hearing of any commission or public body in a city where I felt as if my client was prejudged more than I just felt in the last few minutes of this commission. I've been before this commission for a number of years, and I have the utmost respect for every one of the commissioners, but I would please urge you to follow your counsel, that your counsel gave you, and remember that due process does apply in this matter. So you're dealing with a business with vested rights, the whole concept of innocent until proven guilty, and let's please not act like a lynch mob to the, one of the larger employers in the city, and at least show a modicum of goodwill to allow them to present their position. Thank you for that, and let me go forward, and I appreciate the indulgence. This is Nobu Restaurant. The setting is the restaurant opened in the summer of 2012, after getting its permitting in 2007. It employs approximately 220 workers, one of the largest taxpayers in the city, approximately 60 per shift. The restaurant immediately became a destination experience in their city, and the experience, as stated by the mayor as recently as a couple days ago, is reflective of Malibu as an entire community as a whole. So there's a mutually symbiotic relationship between this destination restaurant and the city, because the city certainly wants to show well for the city, and we certainly hope that the city wants to do well by this restaurant. This is a consistent, high-quality dining experience that is very, very popular, and cannot afford to rest on its laurels, or to provide anything but the optimal experience from parking, through dining, through exiting the restaurant, and it's something that the restaurant strives to comply with at all times. We've heard previous testimony in the other hearing about valet incidents. In fact, there are records of none. The valets at Nobu have no record of any traffic incidents. The valets themselves wear safety vests and are admonished to obey all traffic laws. There is, the restaurant was permitted for 5,904 square feet, and there is a significant dispute over what is the applicable service area for this restaurant. So the sta, your staff report in front of you states that the permitted service area is 3,700 square feet. When asked in a meeting a couple days ago, what exactly do you base that on, or, as your planning director just stated, typically, there's an exhibit attached to a resolution showing the service area? In this instance, there is none. Planning staff, Stephanie Hanner, in her staff report, referred you to a seating arrangement and furniture map that was approved by the city in 2010 as part of this premises' building permit application, having nothing to do with its entitlement for service area or parking requirements. So we applaud Planning Commissioner Mazza's comments about what is the propriety of the seats in the restaurant. There's no relevance to the seats to this proceeding. We're talking about a square footage service area of 3,700 square feet. That equates to 74 parking spaces. There is a joint-use parking agreement onsite, which grants 10 of those, 10 of Soho House spaces to Nobu. That's exactly what's been operating under for the last few years, and it's exactly what's operating now. The primary issues, and the only issues in the staff report, are expanded service area and alleged improper off-site parking. The staff claims that there was an expanded service area without a permit regarding courtyard and railing. Again, we will point to the resolution in 2007, which refers to absolutely no specified service area. The resolution calls for 3,700 square feet. We will put on the record and swear under penalty of perjury that until that area was expanded, Nobu was operating in 2,810 square feet, less than its entitled service area. So when Nobu went and expanded to the areas at issue, the courtyard and the railing, as we call them, it is still under its entitlement of 3,700 square feet, which is where the parking requirement comes from. So again, we, we have a different set of facts that we're operating under, and a different version of the facts. So we're operating within our permitted service area. To be a good neighbor, and frankly, once our office got involved to try to cool everyone's heads to look at the facts here, we advised our client, and Nobu has confirmed that it's receded from the dispute, excuse me, the disputed service area, to take that off the table, so it's a non-issue. So those disputed service areas, which we believe were permitted still to operate in, are vacant right now, and we hope, hopefully, those will be put back into play. Now, so Nobu's committed to not using those service areas. The issues are, as I mentioned, the 2007 entitlements do not specify a designated service area, and the 2010 materials relate to a, the wastewater and furniture requirements. So the issue that we'd like to work with staff on is what is the permitted service area, and what do you base that on? We're happily, we've started the dialogue already, and we want to continue it. Now, moving on to the parking issues, staff has taken the position that there is no off-site parking permitted at this site. When asked what is the basis for that statement, staff has stated that it's the spirit of the CUP. Now, we're fully happy to follow a spirit of a document, but if it's not there, it's not there. Staff talks about these two conditions, these two findings, about what supports the proposition that no off-site parking is allowed. None of those conditions, none of those findings say that. You can see all of them right in front of you, and it complies, Nobu complies with every one of them. And in fact, the condition E, condition E acknowledges the fact that off-site parking will occur, because it talks about, we want to ensure that in our findings, that off-site parking does not displace public parking for beach access. Now, we acknowledge that's one of the issues. We need to, Nobu is parking at a variety of private parking lots in the area, more than one. So if the investigation, or the, the cooperation between us is, let's come forward with those agreements, let's talk about what those entitlements are for those sites, we're happy to do it, and we're happy to enter into an agreement. But the conclusion is that off-site, non-required parking is allowed by the CUP. The code enforcement issue as well requires that a lot-full sign be placed across the opening of Nobu's parking lot. Again, Nobu's complying because it wants to be a good neighbor, and it wants to be a good business within the city. However, this forces patrons, if they still want to go to Nobu, let's say they want to honor their reservation, to meander and wander around PCH to self-park, walk along PCH, walk back to their car when they're done with their experience, and go home. We would submit to you that that's not a good resolution for anybody. We'd like to come to a resolution on the use of off-site parking. The proposed solution, Nobu's committed to operating within the area the planning commission identified as its permitted service area, as long as the current CUP is in effect. That's a measure of goodwill. We want to work with the city and come to a resolution. We plan to, at the, in appropriate time, come before the planning director, as she is empowered under condition 13 of the CUP, to seek to expand into the yellow highlighted areas, which we've retreated from, the courtyard and the railing, and in exchange, we would take out of service those areas with the black Xs through them, such that we are, we remain below the permitted 3,700 square feet, and we're allowed to put the areas that we think are best for the restaurant and best for our patronage, and frankly, best for the community, back into use. That is a separate, that is completely separate from what's before you tonight. We plan to do it in accordance with the existing CUP at the appropriate time. In addition, we want to relieve any PCH backup and congestion by creating two incoming lanes to the parking area and immediate car processing, so that there's no backup onto PCH, so that traffic is eased at all times, even peak hours in both directions. We plan also to amend our CUP, confirming a service area. If the city wants more clarity to an exact CUP, an exact service area, we will commit to it. And in fact, it should clarify the situation, so we don't have the ambiguity that we're all operating under right now. We'd like to memorialize an agreement for off-site, non-required parking, and complete all this as quickly as possible. I wanted to end on a bit of humor, but I don't know if it's appropriate this time. I wanted to say, let's eat. But nonetheless, I'll conclude there, but hopefully, we can all have an open mind and continue this matter as scheduled to August 21st. We look forward to working with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And we have four more speakers. In the spirit of fairness, if they need an extra minute, I will be granting it. First is Frank Nielsen.
Not working.
Probably need a little help from the booth.
From Alex.
Parker, do you have a...
There it is.
I don't know.
Good evening. My name is Frank Nielsen, 22400 block of PCH. I have lived down the street from Nobu for about 20 years. I woke up this morning at dawn and shot this video, driving my truck on PCH. I want to show what a ghost town this particular area near my address becomes after Nobu closes each night. This video shows that residents in this particular area park very few vehicles on PCH during the overnight hours. During the day, almost every single spot on both sides of PCH is taken. This was not always the case. Neighbors and myself, witness people wearing Nobu uniforms, parking on PCH, and then walking towards the Nobu location. I am not saying that every single spot is taken by someone working at or visiting Nobu. When this restaurant opened, the parking problems got worse and worse. It is really bad now. The Malibu Times published a story last week that stated, "Residents Along Billionaires Beach Are Also Furious That Nobu Employees Park Their Cars On PCH All Day, Every Day, Further Aggravating The Chronic Parking Problem And Also Violating The City Rules." Nobu has repeatedly met with city, city staff, made promises, and failed to follow through, according to the city planning department. Says the city, the property owner and tenant, have failed to make substantial efforts to comply. I am here tonight to ask the commission to fix this parking problem. Is Nobu violating city rules? I actually like and enjoy Nobu, the restaurant. I am proud to live so close to such a trendy place. I like to go there with friends and do not want to see this place. I ask the commission to do something effective on this parking problem tonight. One restaurant should not be allowed to negatively impact the neighborhoods such as this one does, every single day, and even worse on weekends. Please save our summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Damon Geisler?
Thank you for listening. My name is Damon Geisler. I also live in the same building where Frank lives, and I'm, I'm just here to say, well, everything's changed since listening to all this stuff, but the man that was just up here in the beginning, talking about how they wear vests, I know for a fact they don't wear vests. I watch people cross the street from the valet all the time, and it is dangerous there. That, they come out, because the light, the way the, the crosswalk situated, their driveways at the light, it's really confusing, and they do pull out of there, even patrons pull out of there, you know, and it gets kind of hairy and crazy right there. But, um, for, I, I submitted some pictures as well. Sunday, I was chilling in my apartment, and the door was open, and next thing you know, I'm smelling weed, and I hear this bass bumping, so I look outside, and it's a Nobu employee, you know what I mean? And once again, they're parking in front, and I have pictures that I showed that they're parking, and the trash they leave at their break time they come out, and they sit at their cars, listen to their music, throw their trash on the ground when there's a dumpster right there they can use. I just think we need to come up with a resolution of this situation. You know, I understand people need to work, and people do what they do, but it's also starting to impact my life. My granddaughter comes over and has to be exposed to this. I have two really good-looking daughters, and they get exposed to some comments from these guys at times when they're visiting to try to use the beach. I literally live right across from the beach access, and I have pictures that I submitted with the car with the beach access sign, so they are violating the code from what I'm learning. And I just think that we need to come up with a solution to this, and obviously, it doesn't matter what we say, I think it's more about the money. So I'll just show up next, the 21st, and thank you for your time.
Appreciate you speaking up, and it does matter to us. And Krista Roberts?
Yes, sorry. I just wanted to say that we don't want Nobu and Soho House to close. They're great places. Our property values, quite frankly, are soaring, but we'd like them to be a good neighbor, and as Ken said, they are, but they're not. The parking situation is terrible. They do park on the streets, and they are using off-site parking that's not permitted, for instance, right on the street. I see them wearing vests, not all of them, but a lot of them do, the valets do wear the vests, but they're darting back and forth a lot, impacting parking, impacting traffic. So what I think should be done, and this is up to you guys, I mean, when I work for the studios, if there wasn't parking, they'd have, they'd have an off-site shuttle service, and there were always some idiots that would park at location, and if enough of them did that, the shoot would be shut down. So if, if Nobu and Soho kind of policed their own people and made them park in the correct place, either a shuttle area, or the place across the street they were talking about, that would work. Also, I'd like, hopefully, to get permit parking out there, like you're doing by the pier. That would solve everything, if the residents had permit parking. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your input. Norm Haney?
Good evening, again, planning commissioners. My name was mentioned here tonight, so I thought I would speak to the issue. Approximately five weeks ago, I was approached by the, by the head of the valet parking for both Nobu and Soho, and he wanted to rent space at, at my property, at 22729 PCH, which is the old Shell gas station. My comment was, are you willing to file a CUP and get it approved by the city of Malibu? And he said, yes, but in the meantime, while I'm preparing it, I'd like to park there. So I made an agreement with him that he could park there from 6:00 at night until Nobu closed, and the rental rate was $3,000 a month. He didn't file the CUP, and I let things go, and I was called in approximately a month ago by Doug Clevenger, and he said, you don't have a CUP, you need to stop doing what you're doing. That afternoon, I called, and I said, you can't park here anymore. I'll give you back the amount of money that's due on the rest of the month. If you're willing to file for a CUP and pay the $3,000 charge that they charge for, for a CUP, I will co-sign it, and you can park from 6:00 to midnight. You're within 300 feet of a, of a crosswalk and a light, and you meet the requirements, as I understand them, for off-site parking. He didn't want to do that, so he hasn't parked in my lot since. He didn't want to do that, so he hasn't parked in my lot since. And now, the opportunity is pretty much gone, because I need to move forward with at least taking down the canopies as soon as I can get a permit. I'm busting my tail to get one. I expect to get one next week, take down the canopies. It's not the use I want for the property, so I'm probably going to ask for an extension. I want another use for the property, and that will come before you in a separate hearing. But I wanted to tell you where I was. I do want to be a good citizen. I did right the wrong. He's not parking there anymore, and I will pay whatever tax I owe the city. It's $3,000, roughly five months, whatever that amounts to. I'll discuss it tomorrow with the people at the city. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Norm. Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken yet on this item that would like to speak? Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Well, I know we're looking towards a motion continue. I would just add, what's interesting to me is that it seems like we have two distinctly separate issues here. One is clearly, to me, the neighbors that have written, showed up at this meeting and other meetings, it's the parking and its impact on their lifestyle and their ability to enjoy their homes and safety and all that. And on the city side, there's other issues related to service area, so it seems like I'm feeling two distinct areas to be worked out. And with that, any comments or a motion?
Just, what's going to happen between now and August to deal with the parking issue? Just, I mean...
Well, at this time, we would continue with what the code enforcement staff has worked with or communicated to the applicant, which is that off-site parking isn't allowed and that they use the lot full signs. There's, it's not an ideal solution, but off-site valet parking, all of their off-site, let me back up, all of the valet parking is supposed to be provided onsite, based on our reading of the CUP, and so, operating outside of that, we don't have the leeway to do that.
Yeah, but you've got all this employee parking, right? I mean, they're the ones, the employees appear to have a significant impact on parking on PCH. So unless something happens, that's going to continue until we get to the 21st or whatever heck date it is. And, you know, it's good for Nobu, right? I mean, Nobu's making money off the backs of the residents. And I don't, there's something wrong with that, at least in my mind.
Is there a mech, I mean, clearly, the impact on the neighborhood seems pretty substantial. I think anyone who drives by there can see that there's no parking, for whatever reason. Is there any way, is there any sort of emergency perk, part, permit to allow parking, or is that just not? I'm trying to think how to help the neighborhood.
I think the applicant could help with the situation by coming up with some sort of a mechanism for their employees to park that doesn't have this impact.
I mean, is there a lot further way they can shuttle to? Is there mechanisms like that the city has, or I'm just reaching out there at this point?
Those are the types of things that we would be looking at in the next few weeks.
When it does come back, I mean, we know the arguments that Nobu's going to make. Maybe it was just my agenda, but I couldn't find the actual conditional use permit in my package. So when it comes back, will you make sure that you have all your documentations that will address the arguments?
Yes.
It may be my package, because my package has one set of documents under the Soho, and all the Soho documents are under the Nobu section. It may be just the way mine was put together, but I couldn't sort it out. So, and I didn't bother to try and figure it out, because I knew it was going to be continued, but when you come back, if I could have...
Yes, we'll make sure that all the documents are there.
I appreciate that it was confusing, because attachment one, the first attachment, was the correspondence that was received, which was at the last meeting, so it's a combination of comments related to Nobu and Soho related to parking. So attachment two, which is the resolution, followed all of the correspondence. So for future reference, we'll make sure to have that resolution first. It'll be easier to reference.
Chair?
Yes.
Could you maybe ask Nobu what they're going to try and do over the course of the summer to relieve some of the impact on the, I mean, have they got any plans to help out?
Ken, would you like to come up and address that?
I'd be delighted, Mr. Chair. Well, first of all, we hear everything that's said tonight loud and clear. To the extent that employees continue to park on PCH despite the admonishments of management, management will take care of that with its own employees, for both Soho House and Nobu. So the immediate messaging is going to be, we need to resolve the issue on PCH parking, because I assume that the neighbors who are complaining aren't permitted to park in the private lots that we're using for our overflow parking. So the messaging that I hear loud and clear is, ensure that employees don't park on PCH. To the extent that their employees are carrying on or doing things that are illegal in the adjacent neighborhood, it's something that we can certainly try to police ourselves as well. I hear the testimony loud and clear. We hear that certainly the commissioners don't want that happening either, and neither does city staff. To the extent that we can work out an off-site parking agreement that relieves pressure on PCH quicker than August 21st, it's certainly going to be my strong recommendation that we do that immediately. So I think the messaging is powerful, the messaging is loud and clear, and we want to be, both businesses want to be good neighbors to both the folks who live there, to patrons, to the city. So in my mind, we do that by policing parking on PCH and by ensuring that the off-site parking agreements are appropriate for the numbers of cars that are needed.
If I'm a neighbor, what can I expect to see over the next couple of weeks that's going to show me there's some progress being made?
I don't have empirical, concrete measures. I know that we would certainly ensure that our employees do everything we can to, number one, reduce the amount of cars our employees are using, and number two, to ensure that our employees are not parking on PCH, and maybe when the employees come in, question them or get somehow, get some proof as to where they're parking. And if they're parked, and if they're parked on PCH, do whatever we can to move them. If we need to put them in our own lot, that's what we're permitted to do, number one. If we can put them in an off-site lot that we have an agreement to use in the interim, I would suggest even while we investigate this, while we document this agreement, we do that, because it relieves the neighbors.
I just want to make sure that the residents see something, right, that says it's getting better.
And your message is heard loud and clear.
Okay.
One other quick question, if I may. Just to clarify another point that Jeff made, looking at the paperwork for 6B, it's got some notes from the Soho House, where it talks specifically about needing to have a sticker in the windows of the cars. Is that also policy for Nobu?
I don't know, but we will find out.
Okay, and then if you can just be sure to enforce that, I think that'll give the residents one other way to see who's parking where they shouldn't be, and it looks like it's part of your policies already, so just work to enforce that. I think it'll help, you know, observations.
You know, and maybe it makes it part of the resolution, but I'm just wondering, between now and August, if progress is made, Ken could submit something to the planning director that says, "Here's what we've done to make this thing better." So we're getting some evidence that actually stuff is happening, right between...
Yeah, I don't think we can order them to do any specific thing here. We're continuing this, they're working with staff. If at the next hearing, you get a bunch of neighbors coming, well, no.
We can ask them to follow their own rules, right?
That's their rules, they're not in our CUP.
Okay, well, then I respectfully ask that, if you could, because you have it written, so.
We hear the messaging loud and clear about PCH parking in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ken.
Bonnie, I know I've had disagreements with staff for decades on what a service area is, and it's my experience in other towns, the service area usually includes something other than the table and the chair, that waiters have to walk around, and in this particular case, if we do not have a service area map, I think that it behooves the city to come up with a rational definition of a service area, and the reason I say that is, the Malibu and having occupancy of 384 people with three square feet per person isn't rational. So there's something wrong with our service area calculation, and this might be the way we fix it. And that's only a suggestion, not something from the planning commission.
I agree. We do need to look at service area, and that's something that we'll bring back at some future time.
Well, I'm just saying, in this case, if they're saying they have no map...
Right, well, that's another...
They have a certain number of service area square feet. That is, that square feet on the ground varies greatly on how you define service area.
I understand. There was, in referencing the minutes from the meeting where the CUP was approved, there's reference to a handout that was provided at the meeting illustrating service area, and that's something that we're in the process of tracking down, along with the recorded meeting itself, just to try to understand better the context that the planning commission discussed all these things in, where there are gray areas between staff's interpretation and the applicant's in terms of what the conditions mean.
Now, before I make a motion, what would be the difference between continuation and forwarding to, for revocation, as far as what we consider at the next meeting?
At this point, yeah, staff would recommend a continuance based on the progress we felt like we made at the one meeting that we've had so far, rather than a revocation hearing. You could, as Christine mentioned, you could recommend scheduling a revocation hearing just to make sure that there were, there's an incentive to continue making progress. It doesn't mean that you're obligated to pursue a revocation at that hearing. It would be an opportunity to get this additional information, so it's up to you which way you do it. You could also, if you choose to continue this to get an update and that sort of thing, you could indicate that you'd like it to happen as soon as possible, if not, if, but no later than August 21st. If we do, if we are able to make progress quickly, we could bring it sooner if that works out.
Just reading what the recommendation was, it was a hearing for revocation, correct, in terms of what was recommended?
That's right. And so, the staff report went out before we were able to meet with the applicants on this, so that's why we're presenting these, both options to you in terms of recommendation.
Can we do both?
Yes. You could say that you want to continue this till August 21st for staff to bring back either a compromise that they can recommend to alleviate the traffic issues, parking issues, or set it for revocation.
I make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yeah, wait, 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 wait.
Sorry?
I have questions about this.
Go ahead.
Christie?
Yes?
You're saying that our motion is to either bring it back with a, say it again.
The motion is to direct staff to bring back on August 21st either a recommendation for additional conditions, or whatever it is that they come up with that will alleviate the parking problem that the staff can recommend, or if they're unable to come up with that agreement with the property owner before that time, to then notice it for revocation. So you're basically...
So basically, what I was afraid you were saying was that we were essentially setting the revocation hearing now, rather than, but no, you're saying that when it comes back, to either come back, okay, all right.
You're arming your negotiators.
Hmm?
You're arming your negotiators.
Yeah, okay.
And this has no impact on code enforcement continuing to...
That's correct.
Okay.
Nothing you're doing is alleviating their obligation to comply with the current laws.
And the neighbors are, can put Doug on speed dial as needed, I'm assuming?
I'm not going to answer that question.
Okay, any more discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I just want to say, on this issue, it does make a difference when everyone shows up, both sides, it really does. Without that input, we have no idea. So people sometimes think coming here is a waste of time and whatever. It actually makes a really big difference, and you should let your neighbors know that.
I'd also like to say that I don't think any of us have any intention of interfering with a lawfully operated business, and that it, part of the health of Malibu is our businesses, so the purpose here is to resolve a pretty serious issue in a rational way.
And let us know if you see some progress.
All right. We're moving on to item 3A1, the Malibu Memorial Park Project, initial study number 16-002, mitigated negative deck number 16-001, coastal development permit number 15-028, variance number 16-016, site plant review number 16-009, miter modification number 16-010, conditional use permit number dash, no, 15-011, and of course, lot merger number 16-001. May we have a staff report?
Oh, yes.
If we're opening this, this poll...
Bonnie, do we need a staff report if we're just looking at a resolution we've already read?
Yes, let me just follow up on that. Here's, if I may, step on your toes. This will be your staff report. The item that's before you today is the resolution that was to memorialize the decision that you made. So what's in front of you is this. Does this resolution memorialize the decision made? Do the words say what you wanted to say? Are there any typos? Could it be said better? That's it. If you want to change this resolution, then you would have to continue the matter and have it re-noticed for a public hearing in order to reopen it. You can't make substantive changes to this resolution tonight the way that it's been noticed.
We can make minor...
Yes.
Minor changes, right?
You could, yeah, to reflect what you did.
Right.
Yes, you can. You can improve the language, but you can't change the outcome.
That's all my questions. I have nothing to disclose. Actually, I do...
Well, we don't need a report, then? Is that what you're saying? Okay. Okay, so we don't need to make declarations, disclosures?
They can raise one, speak up.
Okay.
Let me make one, in that I was absent while this hearing was conducted, but I watched the tape, and so I'm able to participate, I believe.
All 10 hours?
It was fascinating television entertainment.
Hopefully involved a glass of wine somewhere in there.
Bottled.
And I may have dozed off once or twice.
Okay, if we don't have any questions, I'll open the public hearing. We do have one speaker. Okay, public hearing. Don Schmitz?
Chairman Commissioners, Don Schmitz, on behalf of the applicant. You should also have a speaker slip for Mr. Fred Gaines. Just very briefly, want to thank staff for the very detailed staff report. We are in agreement with the resolution. We appreciate the red line version, which makes it very clear, as it pertains to what those changes were made to reflect the decisions and the stated modifications from the planning commission. We have, in fact, and I'm going to ask Mr. Gaines to speak to this in the appropriateness of this tonight, we have submitted some additional, not even really additional, some modified language as it pertains to the screening landscaping. This was something that we discussed with our neighbors across the highway to assuage their concerns, as it pertains to visual impacts from their, to their residential project from the mausoleums. You'll recall, commissioners, that a big part of the deliberations that you had before was about screening landscaping. was about screening landscaping from, from the development, not just for our neighbors, but also for the highway and for the scenic roads, Malibu Canyon in particular, but also Pacific Coast Highway. So the language which we submitted is language that we're in agreement with. Again, it is reflective of the special conditions that, that you adopted for the screening landscaping. It's got some subtleties in there that our neighbors would like to see in regards to the screening landscaping that we're going to be planting being mature at the time that we plant it. So it immediately serves to screen the view of the mausoleums from, across the highway from the property. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Don.
And we're available for questions.
Okay, Fred?
Good evening, everyone. Fred Gaines, on behalf of the Malibu Memorial Park. We, we negotiated some additional language that we think clarifies the landscaping requirements that our neighbors asked us to, to do. We've given that to you. Madam City Attorney, I, I don't know whether you're, I wasn't clear from your statement about what can and can't be done, whether you felt that this was some, that there was some issue with this. This, we don't think it does anything more than clarify what was the intent of the landscape, both the landscape plan and the language that's, that's already in there regarding landscaping. If it makes a difference as to whether it's an additional condition, or whether you add this language into the conditions that are already here that talk about landscaping, that's going to-
Can someone share that with us at some point?
Clarify views? Well, I thought that, I thought it was provided. Okay, we did, we gave it to the planning director, so I apologize. I'd thought it was-
Yes.
Sure.
Do you want to?
I, I can still read it this hour, yes. So the language that, that we're, that we're suggesting be added, which we think clarifies the existing conditions and the intention of the, of the landscape plan that's going to be included in, in the approval, reads as follows. Subject-
Fred, could you tell us where?
It's here.
No, I mean, where in the resolution?
Where in the resolution it would go?
Yes.
You, you have a section on, on landscaping that starts with condition 72. So I'm taking a minute to look as to, as to which of the conditions it might, it, it might, you know, most appropriately be, be, be added to. The city attorney can advise you whether it could be added as a separate condition, or whether it needs to be included in the language of an existing condition, but it would be that section. So let me read the, it's been requested, I read the language. Let me read the language. "Subject to the applicable rules and restrictions of the City of Malibu, including any fuel modification regulations, and prior to the construction of each such mausoleum to be constructed on the Pacific Coast Highway side of the Green Acres property, PCH side, such mausoleums shall be referred to as the landscape mausoleums. The owner shall plant non-deciduous landscaping that at the time of planting will be tall and wide enough to substantially screen the portion of such landscape mausoleums fronting on the Pacific Coast Highway. And such non-deciduous landscaping shall be maintained for the life of the project. Provided, however, in accordance with the City of Malibu's rules and regulations, Green Acres shall be permitted to vary such landscaping as its plans, and the proposed location of its mausoleums may change in the future, as long as the landscape mausoleums remain substantially screened on the PCH side of Green Acres property, fronting Pacific Coast Highway. In no event shall the landscape mausoleums be located closer to Pacific Coast Highway than shown on the plans approved with this resolution." So you already have plans, including landscape plan, shows the location of mausoleums, shows the landscaping. This just clarifies that there, at the time of planting, in that area, it'll be tall enough, wide enough to, to block the view. I think this was clearly the intent of the commission at the, at the last hearing. It's, it, it goes in-
And I think this clarification says it three or four more times, I'm pretty sure.
Yes. So we are accommodating the neighboring property owner. We think it clarifies it. We have no objection to having this language added. And, and we, we believe it can be added. If the commission finds that that's in fact consistent with what their action was and their intent, we think it could be added tonight, and the resolution, final resolution could be adopted.
Thank you. Kristi, would, would, or Bonnie, would this be substantially conforming to what we have?
Right back at you. That's your, your decision to make. Luckily, I wasn't even here that night, but-
Our decision, but, I mean, to me, it sounds like more detail on what we already approved. Would there be any legal warning you would give on that, that you see?
Well, the, no. That, I mean, generally speaking, but the, the issue is this, is that, you know, we tell the public when and where we are going to hear all the evidence and make a decision and impose the conditions. And then usually, we have the resolution ready that night, sometimes we don't. And so we don't ask the public to come back the second time, because we, they can trust that what we're going to do at the second meeting is just memorialize what we said we were going to do at the first meeting. Which is why I say, if you want to change your minds, which is okay, you have to renotice it, so that everyone's back. Within that parameters, if you think that this resolution memorializes what you intended to do, add it. If it doesn't, renotice it, and we'll add it then.
It's my remembrance that this is basically what we said. But I want to ask staff one question. Condition 75 and 77, are they contrary to this condition? Because one of them says you can't form a, a wall or a fence. And I don't know if this is saying that or not saying.
So condition 75 deals with things that occur within the side, let's see, in the front yard or side or rear yard setbacks. So if the, if this landscaping is outside of that area, I don't believe you'd have a conflict.
Okay, and-
And 77 deals with primary views from a property. There's not a primary view at issue, because the property, all the, the majority of the property on the opposite side of PCH from this is vacant.
Okay, and this would, okay.
They've got the crumber property, and they're vacant.
And then-
If you're nervous about that, you can add to the language.
Except for-
If, in the event there's a conflict, condition 75 and 77, control.
Is, is that reasonable?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, then I'd like to make a motion that, that, should this be a separate?
You can just, you can move the whole resolution without amendment.
But I mean, okay, but should this be like 75 or 77, or do we have to renumber everything?
No, let's, let's call that, let's call that 75A.
Or it seems to fit under 83, because that's talking, just the language there seems to fit with how this thing reads. If you kind of said, required change is subject to blah, blah, blah.
Which one?
If you look at the way 83 is phrased, then they could just continue that language right along with it.
Okay, so I would include, I make a motion that we include submitted language in resolution under 83, condition number 83. And was there anything else the staff wanted us to correct? Everything else is fine, right?
Nothing beyond what is presented in your attachments.
Okay, that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
No, no, what, were we approving the whole resolution now?
Yes.
Okay, I just have one, one comment then. Your mic?
Under monitoring, I thought, Don, we talked about that. We said we're going to try and automate that process versus having some guy standing out there. So I thought we agreed to that in the course of the meeting.
What, if I may, Commissioner Euring, the, the direction given for the condition was to have the applicant work with the planning director on what the process would be.
Okay.
And that'll be included in that.
But automated, I thought, I thought we said we wanted, because we don't want, like I said, we don't want to have some, depend on some guy sitting out.
Well, I don't, I don't believe that they want to pay for somebody to sit out there, so that-
You're happy with, you're, okay.
Yeah.
Fine, then I'm happy.
Okay, are we okay for a roll call?
Cool.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Before we, before we adjourn, I'd like to thank the developers of this property for 15 years or so, working with the city-
Yeah.
And coming up with a solution that pretty much makes everybody happy. Nobody's ever happy, but, yeah.
Except for Joe.
Except for Joe. But this is how developers should work with the city and the citizens. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Second, all right. We're done. Thank you, everyone.